12th, 2007 is now 5:30 PM. And as we do all meetings, we will start with the invocation by Chuck Sharo of St. Paul's Church. Chuck?
My name is Francisco C. Puentes. I'm a resident, very proud resident of Cameron County. I have visited many colonias and many parts of Cameron County during the last few years, and I noticed that some people bought their lots years and years ago, and they're building homes, they're placing trailer homes and lots that are very, very low, very low-lying areas, and they're flooding afterwards, six months, a year later, they're flooding. I would like to see if the county can implement in the building department to let these people know, if they're ignorant about what's going on, to let them know that they must build, they must put some dirt, field dirt, and build a little higher. On another note, I've been involved in the political arena for a few years. I've been coming to Cameron County during elections, when they're counting the votes and everything, for maybe 16, 17, 18 years. And I have seen the politica system and the way that we distribute mailing ballots and all that. Let's see if we can find a way to control those things, because we need better government, more transparent, and we don't want to sell out nobody's votes. I think we need to take control of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. C. Puentes. Jack Gibson?
Good evening. My name is Jack Gibson. I live out in Arroyo City. I'm not going to take up much time in this public comment section. I am going to speak later on Agenda Number 40, when the Red River Services item comes up. I would just like to ask if there's any possible way that if that could be moved up, it'd be helpful.
Jack, a couple of meetings ago, what I announced to the public, and I guess I'll do it again, that we're going to have two options. One, you can speak at the beginning of the meeting, as you're doing now, as a public comment, or you can wait till a specific agenda item is on. Anybody that wants to speak to that agenda item is welcome to do so at that time. So if you want, you can defer until the item comes up, and then you can speak at that time during the discussion.
I will, because I've got some questions and comments.
Okay, why don't we, you want to just do that?
Yeah.
All right, thanks. If that goes to anybody else that signed up for public comment, if you have a specific agenda item that you would like to wait to address, at that point, we can do so at that time. When I ask for further discussion, at that point, you just stand up and go to the podium and state your name and do all the deal. All right? Chris Escobar? Is this also in regards to Red River? Do you want to speak at the agenda item, or you want to speak now?
Right now.
I won't let you do twice, all right?
Okay, right now.
Okay.
I'd like to thank everyone on the commission for giving me the time to speak. I live in San Benito with David Garza in his district, and I'd like to comment, I have documents of just unbelievable problems with Red River Services, dating back to January. I've been double-billed, late fees every single month. I have called and left messages. They never call you back. The only time I receive a call back is when I send a fax threatening to come to the county court, and then they call me back. My understanding, there's been over 1,500 complaints in reference to this company in two weeks, and that's people that know what to do or have an idea what to do. How many other people are out there that are affected by this company, that maybe they speak Spanish, or might not know what steps to take to defend themselves that are being affected by this company? I have canceled checks, credit cards, everything, that I've paid my bill on time, and every month, I get a late fee. This last bill, I was triple-billed for $76, and it's a month later, and they still cannot clear it up, they still cannot fix the problem. And basically, today, I filed a complaint with the Texas Attorney General, requesting that they investigate this matter, and also look into it, to law in Texas, that if you're a senior citizen, and you're ripped off by a company or affected by them, I'd say $100,000 fine per occurrence. And I'm sure there are a lot of elderly people that have been affected by this company. So I'd like to bring it to the commission's attention, that something be done. I tried this, which they called every garbage company in the Yellow Pages, and no one will provide service in my area because of Red River. And it's a free country. I do not have a choice to go with whom I wish to go with. The whole idea when this company was first brought in by a previous administration was that you could stay with whichever company you were with. Now, that's no longer the case. There is not a choice. And that's what I'd like to comment to the commission, that a decision be made, or something be done in reference to this company. Supposedly, they were supposed to have a representative here today. I don't know if they are here.
They're here.
Okay. I've been receiving calls from Austin, trying to call Austin, the local office, to know that they're still researching it.
Okay. We have, if you want to make those documents part of the record, you can do so. And if you want to, or you make them, if you want to make them part of the record, when we go to that agenda item, you can do so as well. If you need some copies of those, we can get somebody from our office to make some copies for you, if you want to leave those copies with us.
Okay, where would I leave the copies?
I would give them to, are those for us?
This is the original. If I could get a copy.
David, can you take care of that form, and just make a cop, one copy for the record?
The Attorney General complaint is included in that.
Yeah, just make copies of the whole thing, if you want, and then we'll just take it from there. Thank you, Chris. Gregory Smith? Greg? Again, do you want to, do you want to address it right now, because you're addressing several things? You're addressing several things. Is there a specific agenda item? You got it? Take it away.
The county has rebuilt the street out there in that colonia. This is a very old colonia. It's the first time a street's been rebuilt in 25 or 30 years. We really appreciate that. They dug the ditches out and supposedly used a laser to set the levels of the ditches. We can't even mow some of the ditches, because they're so steep. We don't mind mowing them, keeping grass cut. County doesn't cut them. They come in, they don't cut the grass. So we'll cut the grass, but we've been trying for three months now to get them to do something with the ditches, about sloping them down. We've got ditches that still hold a lot of water, because they're too deep, and if they'll just level them off and everything, our water will drain. We also have, you know, speed humps on our, on our street. We petitioned, we got them. They're bigger danger than the speeders. We still want to keep them. The county can put barricades up at the ends of the speed humps and the ditches, let them run over the barricades. Old barricades, ones that y'all don't want to use anymore, anything, to stop these people from going into the ditches. I've repaired my fence four times in two years. We've had about six single-car accidents that have wiped out ditches, ditches and fences on that street in the last two years. These people drive well over 60 and 70 miles an hour, and they go around the speed hump, cross the street and go around. That's crazy. We got children out there. We have people that walk back and forth to the convenience store. Sooner or later, somebody's going to get killed, or maimed, because we're not stopping it. DPS came out, and they did write a bunch of tickets for about two weeks. Now they're, they're gone. County never came. We put some concrete out around the end of those speed humps. You're a foreman. Inform everybody out there that if they ran into one, they could sue me, so we picked them up. So now, y'all put something out. Dig a trench, do something. Don't wait for one of those cars to come through and hit my kid, or hit somebody else's kid, or hit one of the ladies walking down the street with her baby carriage going to the convenience store. These people, they don't, they're not from our neighborhood, they don't care. And we'd really appreciate if y'all put up something at the end of the speed humps and the ditch. Dig a trench there. If they can't, they can't draw, draw a trench, dig, dig a trench in it. It's legal, but I can't put cement out there and paint it yellow again, because somebody's going to sue me. Help us, please.
Thank you. Any other public comment from anybody that did not sign up?
The slides that we're playing there. The slides that we're playing before the meeting was Green Valley Farms yesterday morning, and it's still pretty much underwater in that area. It is being pumped out, and the department has, Public Works has done a good job out there, but there's a whole lot of water still flowing into, into Green Valley Farms, so we need to make sure, just make the Health Department aware that we're going to need some, you know, some help out there with mosquitoes pretty quickly, because it's one huge lake. Okay? And the other set of slides was the Harlingen Annex, which is close to being built. No, 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 I'm just.
Just talking.
Just talking. Public comment.
Well, can I talk, Judge?
Point number said no.
I asked permission. No, I wanted to commend the Sheriff's Department. I was out with Commander Lial and Captain Jaina, when the group from, the delegation from Bear County came to see the work camp, and I was extremely impressed with the staff. I want to commend them. They answered all the questions. It was evident that they know what they're doing. I was extremely impressed with that work camp. It's well-built, and hopefully, we'll get an okay and start using it soon. But my congratulations to the staff. They did an excellent job in taking that delegation on the tour and asking all their questions.
Item two, presentation of a check to Cameron County by John Wallace of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in lieu of property taxes. John?
Good afternoon, Judge Coscos and Commissioners. I don't have a check today. I've already delivered the check, but it was in the amount, probably about, what, two weeks ago, week and a half ago? It was in the amount of $131,467 and zero cents. The county has the check, glad to get it into the county coffers. I'd like to give a little update, maybe on the Bahia Grande project. I appreciate everything the county has done in this project. Some of you all were at the dedication ceremony, where we opened the interior channels. And if you don't know what the interior channels were, they were the channels that basically connect the Bahia Grande to the Laguna Larga and Little Laguna Madre basins. Both of those basins total about 3,000 acres, and they were also a source of blowing dust, just like the Bahia Grande on Laguna Heights, Laguna Vista, and Port Isabel. There's water in those basins now. If you didn't have a chance to see them while they were dry, you'll probably never see that again, unless somebody fills the channels in. So, and I want to also thank the Sheriff's Department for their work crews that have come out there and helped us with the channel stabilization project. It's been an immense support for that project, and the next phase is to, I guess, get the larger channel, get the SEAP money, and it's my understanding that we have a pretty good chance of getting that money, in getting the larger channel in. So, the progress of Bahia Grande is really accelerated over what it's been the last couple of years.
You might want to explain very briefly to the audience, the check that you, that you remitted to the county, what was the purpose of that check?
The check is what we call a refuge revenue sharing check, and basically, it's a check in lieu of property taxes. When the federal government buys property, there's only two agencies in the, in the federal government that actually reimburses counties, counties for the land that is taken off the tax rolls, and that's the Forest Service and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So any, any land that is acquired by the refuge system or by the national forest, we basically try to reimburse the counties for the, for the loss of their taxes on that property, and that's what this check represents, payment in lieu of taxes.
Thank you. Any questions for any members of the court?
Mr. Wallace, go ahead, Commissioner. I'd like to comment, you were talking about the Bahia Grande project, and I know there's been lots of news coverage on it, lots of newspapers. It's really a fantastic project that we're all extremely proud of, being able to put that back underwater and restore it to where it can provide some good habitat for fish and wildlife and all. I don't think everyone really understands the extent of the people that it actually touches. As an example, I was talking to Sharon Putinet this morning about, she's the principal at Episcopal Day School, and her students, her kids, from first through sixth grade, are raising mongrels to go out into Bahia Grande, to help stabilize it and get it back into natural habitat. And I know things like that are, are not just good for the Bahia Grande, but it's also educational for the students and for our kids in the community, to be doing projects like that, and being part of a project, the overall project of restoration of the Bahia Grande. She also mentioned that the building, the portable building that UTB TSC placed out there actually came from their campus, that they no longer needed it, and so it's placed out there. So there's lots of ownership in that project, and I think it's proud ownership, and we certainly do appreciate everything that y'all have done, and your part of the restoration of that area. Thank you.
Now, this was definitely a community-based partnership, and the refuge is and will be in the future an outdoor classroom. We've got university students using it, all the way down to elementary school classes, so it's really a boon for this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to add is that if anyone is interested in a slideshow that was put together by the University of Brownsville and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and about 67 other partners, it's, there's a link on the website that I have at the county that has a complete slideshow of the before and after, the one that we've been passing around forever. So it's really a nice thing to see, because there's aerial photos that show where the channels were proposed to be, where they're at now, and the transformation from the before to the after. So it's on the internet, it's on the website, Cameron County, and it's a really nice slideshow.
Thank you, John. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge presentation of the check? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gatsa. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, but item carries. Item three, presentation of third-quarter report for the international bridge system.
Judge, Commissioners, this is the, for the international bridge system. You should have a copy of the report. Gateway International Bridge, this quarter, bridge crossings had a total of 1,089 crossings. That was about a 65,000 difference in crossings, or a 6% decrease over the same time last year. Our revenue for that period was 1.6 million roughly, which was about a 5% decrease. Our Free Trade Bridge at Los Indios did okay this quarter. We had about 189,000 crossings, and, which was a 1% decrease, and at the same time, we had revenues increase to about 25,000, for a total of about 603,971,000. So that was a good showing at the Los Indios Bridge. The Veterans Bridge in Los Tomates, our bridge crossings totaled 586,646. Our decrease was about an 11% drop, and in our revenues, we had over 2 million in revenues collected during this timeframe, which is about 6% decrease. Overall, total crossings for all three bridges was 1.8 million crossings. We collected 4.3 million, and our customers using our AVI system totaled 52,000, which was a 3% increase. We collected over 600,000, which was a 10% increase with the AVI system. During this quarter, Mexican Customs did not allow commercial traffic through the Veterans Bridge and Free Trade Bridge on three separate occasions for Mexican holidays, which was a loss of income of approximately 40,000, and for the Free Trade Bridge, was 10,000. Over on our Bridge System tab, if you look at the variances for our system, the total variances for the Veterans Bridge was 409,000, the Gateway Bridge was 184,000, and the Free Trade Bridge was a positive 107,000. Our total variance was 486,669, with the county's portion at 335,809. If there's any questions, I'd like to answer.
Any questions? Other than that, just, let's just acknowledge that the budgeted revenues are way below the actual revenues so far, right? We only had one month, which had a positive variance in revenues, which is, I guess, December.
Yeah, I think we discussed that last time.
Yeah. Well, as we know, that's going, that may affect the transfer of revenues that we make annually from the bridge system to the general fund. But there's also a transfer that we've made annually from the bridge system to an operation that is not occurring, so that's, I think that's about 300 or 400,000 dollars, and I'll discuss that with y'all later, but, you know, that's something that we can, that we can utilize to offset some of the shortfalls that we're, that we anticipate having. Ironically, it's going to be almost the same amount of money, quite frankly, so, okay. Anything further? Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report? So moved by Commissioner Gatsa. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item four, consideration approval of resolution declaring intention to reimburse certain expenditures with barring proceeds in regards to project roadmap. Do I hear a motion to support the resolution?
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion?
One question, Tony. Do we have to resolve to do away with the other locations or not? No? Okay. Okay, thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Consent items, are there any consent items that any member of the court wished to take out of order and discuss separately? Mr. Escobar has several items that he would like to include in the consent portion, more specifically, items 44 through?
49.
Through 49.
Judge, I'd also like item number 24 to be pulled out of the consent.
To speak about separately?
Yes.
24?
24.
24 to speak out, to speak on it separately, to the consent, adding 44 through 49 to the consent portion.
Judge, in the supplemental agenda, we also have two, two consent items.
We can include those.
Yeah. On item number one, for the appraisal reports, that is to be awarded to executive appraisals in the amount of 45,500, and on the title services to Sierra Title Company in the amount of 16,123.
All right. Just on item 15, just real quick, Pete. Item 15 is, I'm just curious about the date, August 8, 2001 to June 28, 2008? That was also on the backup. I just don't know if that's a correct date or not.
I'll have to check that.
Okay, we'll pull that one out then, too. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent items with the exception of item 15 and item 24, and include the supplemental two consent items, and adding items 44 through 49 as part of the consent? Do I hear a motion by Commissioner Tamayo? Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Gatsa. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Tamayo. Executive session, we have one item, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Cameron County versus BFI Waste Collection and others, cause number 2005-07-3905-A, and BFI Waste Services of Texas LP versus County of Cameron and Red River Service Corporation of Texas, Inc., case number B-05-DU-279, for discussion and status of case and possible settlement pursuant to Code Section 551.0711A and B. Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Wood. We are now out of executive session. Item A, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Cameron County versus BFI Collection and others. Do I hear a motion?
We need to vote to get out of executive session?
We did, didn't we?
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye to get out.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Let me go back to A again. Do I hear a motion?
Move to deny settlement claim.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa to deny the settlement claim. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Let me go back to one of the consent items.
Judge, no, my extension.
Yeah, Commissioner Tamayo didn't, was not in the room at the time that we had discussion, so, let's go back to the consent items that we pulled out. Item 15, consideration approval of time extension from August 8, 2001. And my, my question was just, is that, is that the correct date, or is there, should be 2007?
Judge, that's correct. That's the correct date. What happened is, this is one of the non-compliant subdivisions that was there, sitting for a long time, and they did not want to put up the letter of credit for the outstanding septic systems, and so they finally came and requested a permit recently.
We can include those.
Yeah. On item number one, for the appraisal reports, that is to be awarded to executive appraisals an amount of 45,500, and on the title services to Sierra Title Company in the amount of 16,123.
All right. Just on item 15, just real quick, Pete. Item 15 is, I'm just curious about the date, August 8, 2001 to June 28, 2008. That was also on the backup. I just don't know if that's a correct date or not.
I'll have to check that.
Okay. We'll pull that one out then, too. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent items with the exception of item 15 and item 24, and include the supplemental two consent items, and adding items 44 through 49 as part of the consent? Do I hear a motion by Commissioner Tamayo? Do I have a second? By Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Garsa. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Tamayo. Executive session, we have one item. Confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Cameron County versus BFI Waste Collection and others. Cause number 2005-07-3905-A, and BFI Waste Services of Texas LP versus County of Cameron and Red River Service Corporation of Texas, Inc., case number B-05-DUSS279, for discussion and status of case and possible settlement pursuant to Code Section 551.0711A and B. Move by Commissioner Garsa. Second by Commissioner Wood. We are now out of executive session. Item A, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Cameron County versus BFI Collection and others. Do I hear a motion?
We need to vote to get out of executive session?
We did, didn't we?
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye to get out. Any opposed? Item carries. Let me go back to A again. Do I hear a motion?
Move to deny settlement claim.
Move by Commissioner Garsa to deny the settlement claim. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Let me go back to one of the consent items.
Judge, no, my extension.
Yeah, Commissioner Tamayo was not in the room at the time that we had discussion, Let's go back to the consent items that we pulled out. Item 15, consideration approval of time extension from August 8, 2001. And my question was just, is that the correct date? Or is it should be 2007?
Judge, that's correct. That's the correct date. What happened is this is one of the noncompliance subdivisions that was there sitting for a long time, and they did not want to put up the letter of credit for the outstanding septic systems. And so they finally came and requested a permit recently. We denied the permit because of lack of installation, and therefore they reissued a new letter of credit for an extension of time.
Okay, that's the right date. That's fine.
And so it's all right.
All right, thank you.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Garsa. Second by Commissioner Tamayo to approve item 15. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. On item 23C, we approved that item. And what you see in front here are all the bids that we got on the insurance. Part of that item was selection of committee to review the insurance proposals. Let me appoint a committee, if it's okay with the court. The committee was made up of Javier Villarreal, Manuel Villarreal, Richard Burst, or somebody from his office, our insurance consultant, and Pizza Pulvera, or somebody from his office, David. Do I hear a motion to approve that committee? Unless you all have some other names that you want to have in there.
Oftentimes when we have legal there, it's more of an advisory position. I don't know if we want to do it that way, or whether they want to be an active voting member on that committee, on the review.
What do you all want to do? You want to make them an active voting member, or just an advisory? David? Hello?
Just legal.
Justice in advisory capacity, is it not? That's how we've done before?
Yeah, the commissioners are right. Historically, they've been part of committees to provide legal advice to the committee.
We can do that. That's fine. We can have four, and then the legal provide legal advice. Okay? All right, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Garsa. Second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 24, consideration and authorization to open the following bids, RFP, RFQ, for the New Real Honda La Paloma and Cameron Park improvements bid.
Judge and commissioners, what we'd like to do on this item is to extend the deadline to August the 6th at 5:00 PM, and award the bids on August the 7th. Our legal department has advised us that we can do a two-week extension. In this case, we're adding an additional week, so we'll get a three-week extension to see if we get additional bids on this project.
Commissioners, it's not limited to two weeks. You can do an extension with the caveat that you don't open the existing bid, and you make a finding that it's in the best interest of the county, based on the fact that the architect has advised that he believes he can get additional bids. With that finding, that's what the wording in statute is, that you make a finding that's in the best interest of the county in your motion, and you extend the period. And then no bid is opened, including the one received prior to the extension, until you receive all bids, and they're all opened at the same time. That's consistent with the County Purchasing Act.
So what action is consistent? We can do just deny opening of the bids?
No, you just move for an extension, Commissioner.
And the bid will not be opened?
Correct.
Move to extend the bid as presented by...
Second.
And we can do that by adding the wording you were saying about finding that this might be in the best interest of the county to extend it. Does that have to have had anything in the original publication or the original bid specs that would allow us to do it at this time? Or is that something we can do at this time? It does not have to be in the notice. It's in the law. Black letter law allows you to extend it, so long as you don't open the bids already received. But it does say that you make a finding that it's in the best interest of the county. Maybe we ought to consider, in future bids on different items, including that language in the bid process, that in the event that we feel like it's going to be in the best interest of the county, we have the opportunity or the ability or the option to extend it. Wouldn't hurt to put it in there, because it would give notice to anybody who's a potential bidder. But you don't have to put it in there, because the law does not require it. Well, I understand you're saying that. But I'm just saying that it might be more acceptable to bidders if we have it up there upfront, as opposed to... Okay.
We have a motion, second.
Any further discussion?
Could you amend the bid to include that you find it's in the best interest of the county to extend the period?
Yes, I did.
And I second it.
Motion by Commissioner Garsa. Second by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Let me take one other item out of order at the request of Commissioner Garsa. Item 38, discussion and possible action on issues regarding the Los Fresnos Annex Building, Justice of the Peace Tax Office and Constable's Department.
Item 38. 38.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us the option to address you. My name is Gustavo Garsa. I'm the JP for Precinct 6, Place 1 in Cameron County. With me is Deputy Constable, Mr. Perez. And we would like to be a little high-tech today, but I have to admit my ignorance with computers. So if you will indulge me a minute, my staff prepared this. I'm going to ask our reporter a question. Can we use a flash drive in this system to bring information to you? You don't have a computer?
Yes, because that makes it so much easier than hooking everything up, just giving you a little flash drive.
Hey, I have kids.
He's got kids.
Well, I have kids. While Judge Garsa is setting this up, this item was brought to my attention a number of months ago, and more recently about two weeks ago, in regards to the infiltration of water in the building and a potential that we had there for a health hazard and a hazard as far as just working in the building. And I know he's tried real hard to get someone to help him, and we have not been able to do what he needs to do. So I figured if he'd present to us, you know, we could better understand his needs.
It's a good time to do it now, too.
Yeah, it's right before budget time, so this is when we need to look at... Just don't go to Hardington and see the building over there. I've been tempted to, okay?
And take pictures.
I did not take these pictures, I will have to admit. And thank you for indulging me, but this is my first PowerPoint presentation. And I was tempted on bringing my secretary or one of my clerks to make sure that I didn't took their time. But the computer's being slow. The problem that we'd like to address, while the computer takes its time, is basically three-fold, Judge and Commissioners. One is the health and safety problems that we have with the building. And this, we're talking about the entire building, the Luis Romero building. There we go. Because the roof has been leaking ever since I've been there. And I started the January 1st. I understand from one of the deputy constables, it's been leaking for 15 years. And I understand from talking to Mr. Sagrada, Tax Assessor Collector, that he's tired of complaining about it, or it's been leaking, leaking for such a long time. But at any rate, because of... I guess I could get this to go. Because of the leakage and the puddles on the floor, we have a serious problem with people having slip and fall. We also have a problem with mold. You will see throughout the presentation that a lot of the ceiling panels have been removed. And we're losing air conditioning, but of course, we're also getting the returned air from the wet roof situation that's creating a mold problem. I was talking to Ms. Belinda at the first office, the tax office, and she mentioned that she thinks she may be experiencing problems. As you can see in this light, the air ducts are exposed, and the roof is exposed. And I think the pictures will speak for themselves. We have a safety problem also, because there's a couple of light fixtures that are getting wet. And I'm going to show you a photo of the large light panel with a puddle inside. Eventually, that's going to cause a shortage, which may cause a fire, but before that, may cause somebody to get a shock. So we have a health problem. During the spring, it got so bad with the rain and the water coming in, not only from the roof, but from the south door, that my office carpet was wet to where I couldn't stand the smell, and I told the ladies to go home, because it was so bad. I've had the fans go in there two or three times. I finally, you know, got exasperated and asked the office to call and just remove the carpet and apply tile. And that alleviated my problem in my office, in the chambers office. But the rest, what you've seen here, is the way it is today. The other area is the security and integrity of the functions that we provide. As you know, we're the Justice of the Peace, we keep files. This last storm that we've had, the leakage has been so bad that our files got wet. So my staff had to take those files and spread them out in the courtroom, on the pews, on the benches, and have them dry. Well, this is a public building. People walk in and out all day long, and they wait there while they take care of their business. There's no way that we could monitor what they did or didn't do. So we're losing our integrity with the safety and the security and the privacy of our functions. Now, the constable will tell you that their problem is a little bit more severe, I think, because they have an evidence room, and they collect evidence.
The concern with that, our main concern with that, is the fact that we do have evidence there that's still pending to go to court. With these leaks, it can cause damage to evidence that we're going to need to have to present. And if we can't do that, well, there go the cases that have been pending, and some of them are severe cases. Now, I've been with the department since 2002, but we've got officers that have been there considerably longer, 10, 15 years, and they've had this problem for quite a while. According to the officers, they've complained, but nothing's been done. We've got equipment, they just put in new computers. We always have leaks, all kinds of problems. Sooner or later, that new equipment's going to get damaged. God forbid, you know, electrical shortages, like the judge was saying, and we end up with a fire, we use a lot of stuff in there. There's really a concern that we really need to have addressed.
The third area, and I think the one that the court will be very concerned about, is that we have a shortage of buckets to set on the floor, which means that the risk and liability to the county is horrendous, because there's a puddle there almost constant. And it's in the hallway that leads from my office, the chambers, the secretary pool, the courtroom, to the bathroom. From the constable's office to the bathroom. From the Tax Assessor Collector's office to the bathroom. In other words, the public has to go to there, and right in the middle, we have a bucket, because there's a leak. So there is a tremendous danger that someone will slip and fall. And before we came, you can see the puddle of water on the floor on this light. Before we came, I was talking to the constable's office, and one of the constables mentioned that their secretary is pregnant, and she already slipped. Thank God she didn't fall. So that is a huge problem. I want to show you the slides on the light fixture. If I'm going too fast, slow me down. But I've got it going, so don't stop me, please. There it is. No question, a puddle in the center of the light fixture. Now, this light fixture is in the storage room, also used as the jury...
Also used as what? I'm sorry?
As the jury room. Now, thank God, we haven't had a jury trial yet. We've had one scheduled, but that day, the defendant shows not to appear, so I had to send the jury back to Cameron County at home, and there was no need to use it. But I'd had the janitor go in, or the maintenance, I'm sorry, and rearrange to make room for them, but this was the room they were going to go into. So here we go, in the storage room. It took us several months to get rid of the cabinets that were in that spot that the arrow's pointing to, but you can see the damage to the floor. Carpet is wet here. And now we've fixed it with the... No, now we've replaced the cabinets that we didn't want with the cabinets that we're now using, and made a little bit more room. But you're looking at the ceiling of that room right now.
How big an area is on the frame before this?
How big of an area?
How big an area is open without a ceiling? Is that what I was...
I'm going to tell you, Commissioner, that I think it's three or four panels that have been removed.
About three or four square feet.
And the panels are about 18 inches wide, about 2 and 1/2 inches long.
So how do you exit? With sandbags on the outside of your door?
We use one door, and that's it. And I have to decide whether to keep the bags there and keep the water out, or remove the bag and have an exit. And I've chosen to just leave them there until it stops raining. That's our presentation. We have a serious problem, Judge, Commissioners. I ask you to consider it. I'm not trying to tell you how to spend the county's money. I'm not here to tell you what the solution is, because, you know, I'm not an architect. I mean, I've been known to build a barn and build a house. I would tell you that the roof is a problem. The idea of the roof being flat is a big problem. But that's not my job, and that's not my purpose. My purpose is to bring it to you, tell you we have a serious problem. It's affected the office, it's affected the personnel, the efficiency, because I've had to send them home. And, you know, it's affecting every part of our office, every function.
Judges, you know, we visited on this about a month and a half or so ago, and I asked that we talk about this during the budgetary process. I don't remember if I asked you, do we own the building, or are we renting that building? We own the building.
I believe you own the building. The county owns it.
Okay, um, we have, you know, we, we've built a new facility and, you know, great facility in San Benito, Harlingen, Lefaria, Port Isabel. Uh, it, you know, if the court wishes, I think it's time to start looking at uh, at Los Fresnos. Río Hondo, I think is also in need of a, of a facility as well. Um, you know, we have a, we have a short-term fix and a long-term fix. A short-term fix is to try to fix this as best we can. Others, the built, the, the little restaurant that's adjacent to that, is that another building or is that uh?
That's another building.
So the only thing that, that's separating is a firewall?
I believe so.
Okay. And we, we talked about driving around that day, but I don't think I could or you couldn't to drive around if there's any, uh, if there's a piece of property in the Los Fresnos area that we could either buy or find a building that just needs some, you know, fix up. And I don't know if you ever had a chance to do that, but I think that's something that we need to look at. Other, you know, the short-term solution is to fix the electrical, fix the leaks, fix, you know, at least get that to where we're not gonna get sued by somebody for something like that. I think that's the quick solution. The, the longer-term thing is, is I was witnessing there is that you're, you just don't have any room to get around. I mean, you've got people basically working around files and it's just, it's just not conducive to, to an office environment. So the second, so that's where we need to kinda get together and, and find a place, find a piece of property or, or do that. But in the interim, Mascherino, I know you have a lot on your plate, but this is something that, that, you know, you may wanna consider putting it on your, on your list of priorities to do as soon as you get through finishing whatever it is you gotta get through, uh, because this is an accident waiting, waiting to happen. So we need to, we need to kinda take a look at that.
Uh, Judge, you, you are correct and, you know, you went out there and I thank you. And when you went there, I was looking at the availability of space to make the area more conducive to the function. Because I have two staff members working in a seventy-seven square foot area and it's not productive. Even if, if I'm on top of them, asking them to take care of their matter, they can't help it, they're overhearing the other person. When the client comes in, wants to pay on a ticket, they both get involved because they're both listening, they're just right there. And there's no room for somebody to go behind them. And that's the work area. Uh, the courtroom's fine, but we don't have place to park the individuals. When we have juvenile court, when we have uh, failure to attend and the parents and the school personnel come with all those kids, we've had up to forty cases a day, we don't have a place to sit them, much less park all those people. That was the concern before the rains came, okay? But then the rains came and, you know, I'm just asking for help and.
Do you all, um?
Do you all agree with that, doing a short-term and then a long-term?
The roof needs to be fixed so that we can stop some of the rain and then repair whatever needs to be done because it, it will take a while, even if we buy a building and especially if we buy land and build a building, it'll take a long time.
Well, let me, let me get a motion to, cause this is a possible action also, if, if we can have a motion from, from a couple of folks on um, and we're gonna have to find a source of funds for this, trying to get an estimate from Mascherino, how much it's gonna cost to fix all this, but at least authorize him to go out and, and evaluate what we need, come back to the court with a price so we can designate a funding source.
I'll, I'll send tomorrow, uh, Building Maintenance and Construction Management to go out there and do an assessment and uh, get some cost estimates for us and then I'll place an item back on the agenda.
And come back in a couple of weeks.
And so in fixing it, Judge, will that take care of the mold situation? I'm concerned about the mold in that building also.
I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I was.
Uh, if, if it's the short-term fix that we're talking about, will, will that take care of the mold situation in the, in the building?
I believe if the roof is fixed where it doesn't leak and the water doesn't stay and.
Then it would be.
Then give it time to dry out, we oughta be okay. So, do I hear a motion to um, to authorize Mr. Spurlet to go out with his assessment team and go out and check it out and then come back with the, with a recommendation to the court? Move by Commissioner Gadsden, second by Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries.
About two weeks, Peter, when, how much time, two weeks?
Item thirty, budget amendments, line item transfers and/or salary schedules.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Judge and Commissioners, there was uh, an additional set of uh, line item transfers that I placed in front of your desk, our stations. All of the uh, line item transfers are within the individual department budgets, uh, just covering operational needs and requests from the departments, uh, the majority. Uh, there's uh, juvenile probation departments and uh, various of their grants that are under their purview. If you have any questions on any specific items, I'll address those.
Okay, any, any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve item thirty?
Motion to approve.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gadsden, any further discussion? All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, item thirty-one, approval of minutes for May the sixteenth and May the twenty-second, two thousand and seven. Have the court members had the opportunity to review the minutes?
Motion for approval.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item carries, item thirty-two, approval of claims. Do I hear a motion for approve, for claims, including the ones that we just received Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the claims?
I move.
Move by Commissioner Benavides, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion?
I have one question. The Cameron County appraisal district contractual expense, is that our annual part of what we pay them?
Yes.
Okay.
Charge to one point four oh nine.
Four oh nine.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamayo, please note my abstention on warrant number one eight four two two zero payable to Harlingen Water Works in the amount of a hundred and seventy dollars and four cents.
And I have an abstention on warrant zero zero one eight four three one four.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, item thirty-three, discussion regarding the fiscal year two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight budget.
Uh, Judge and Commissioners, I had emailed backup to you on yesterday and also I left a packet in front of you that has the calendar on front. Uh, I wanted to start with the calendar, there's a slight change. The ones highlighted in red, uh, the, the, that was originally scheduled for July twenty-fourth, pushing that back to July thirty-first, uh, regarding the discussion and the maximum compensation that the court would consider for elected officials. Um, I don't believe by next week we'll be ready to, to act on that. Uh, and in turn, uh, that pushes back the, the notification date or the publication date in the newspapers, uh, originally scheduled for July twenty-ninth, back to August fourth and fifth. And the reason the different date is so that we can keep the other date, uh, still in, in line for the public hearing, uh, and the grievance and all of that, that the rest of the schedule will stay the same.
So it won't impact anything except for those two items?
For those two items, right. The rest of the schedule, at this point, uh, is to remain the same. Um, as part of that, I also included, um, you had been receiving, I guess, in the budget workshops, uh, the requests for the different departments that were presenting as far as the requests for new positions and salary increases. I included there the total list of, of all the departments that had submitted requests for new positions and uh, salary increases that would be uh, something different that other than what the court would normally approve, that's just for informational purposes. Um, so that you have that, cause not all departments are requesting workshops. Um, excuse me. Uh, I, in the backup that I, I had emailed to you, it's just kind of an, an update and uh, to touch on some things that I'm, I'm currently working on, and some of the increases. Um, I, I received preliminary revenues from the auditor's office last week and, and I'm going through some of them and I will be meeting uh, later on this week with Mr. Allman on, on some questions that I have. I mentioned earlier today that uh, we should be receiving the certified tax roll either at the end of this week or no later than the twenty-fifth of, of this month. Uh, when I receive that, uh, that'll give us a better picture as far as on the tax revenues. So by the end of next week, we should have some, some firm numbers as far as those are concerned. Um, excuse me. Uh, on this, uh, the first page, uh, there's just some, some increases, uh, that uh, I presently have, due, one to contractual obligations and also to just increase in, in operational costs. Uh, the appraisal district, uh, increase is fifty-one thousand, uh, from this year to the next year and that's due to the allocation because it's based on, on the total entities that they, um, provide service for. Because of the school districts, their tax rate, uh, dropped, uh, from one year to the next because of the property tax relief, uh, their portion, uh, went down, so in turn, everybody else is, is going up. So ours was increased, uh, by that amount. Excuse me. Uh, the trial welfare court cost, that's been an issue for the past, uh, that's for the appointed attorneys, uh, for the, you know, past few years. Uh, based on the, on the trend that they're on right now, uh, they're gonna need an additional a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for appointing attorneys for next fiscal year. Uh, the jury fees, uh, when there was an increase, when the state approved the, the increase in the amount that the courts paid to the jurors, uh, that's really shot up uh, this year. Uh, there are additional, uh, revenues that, that we're, uh, to apply for and the state is to reimburse us a portion of that. Um, the district clerk's office is looking into that and see exactly how much that's going to be. Uh, on the expenditure side right now though, uh, it's, it's an increase, uh, based on their, their trend right now, it's an additional a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for jury fees. Um, M and O in county buildings, uh, we're gonna have a couple of new buildings, uh, coming online, uh, even though they, there's offices relocating to those. The larger one, which is the Semenito building, uh, based on the utility costs for the past few months, even though they just moved into there, uh, it seemed kinda high. I'm working with, uh, Mr. Ibarra on that to, to verify that those numbers are correct, excuse me, and also for the increase in the communications for the phone systems, uh, for those facilities. Another item, uh, as far as the health insurance premium, uh, the last time, uh, that the court had increased, uh, what the county contributes to the, the health insurance fund was back in two thousand and four. On page, uh, three, uh, of the, the backup that I submitted, there's, there's a spreadsheet that was actually provided by the consultant, uh, that was forwarded to me and it's purely for informational purposes at this point and to, to start the discussion as far as uh, what it's costing us, uh, on a per employee per month, uh, right now for this fiscal year. Uh, for this fiscal year, it's, uh, running at four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, I'm, I'm sorry, four hundred and seventy-five dollars per employee. And we're contributing four hundred dollars, uh, per month, per employee. So that's something that we're gonna have to address during this budget. As y'all are aware, there's, um, new courts that were approved, that's also something, depending on what action the court takes as to when these courts are gonna, uh, begin operations. Uh, I also included backup as far as, uh, cost, estimated cost for these courts. Uh, we do have in place some of the staff for the family court because those operations are being provided right now. It's just, it's gonna be a state district court instead of an associate judge.
Have you identified what costs we're already incurring?
Yes, on that sheet, uh, the, under the district judge and the family court, the, the associate judge, uh, is currently being, uh, funded by the, the county and it's down towards, uh, the middle where there's.
Those are the brackets, the little brackets?
Correct, the current, uh, associate judge and the current staff, which is the administrative assistant and court reporter. Uh, the, the bailiffs are actually being shared between the juvenile court and them, so they go back and forth.
But they're already budgeted?
Correct. But since this would be a full-time, uh, operational court and Judge Murray actually mentioned to me, uh, that if, if, when this becomes reality, he would prefer that his bailiff stay, uh, with his court all the time instead of running back and forth between Semenito and Bronzel, cause he also utilizes them when he goes to the, to the jail.
But is, is that court, I mean, does it operate every day? The juvenile court? I mean, do, do they?
Yes.
Hear cases five days a week?
Uh, I believe so. And, and when he's, when he's not there, he's also at the, at the, uh, Carrosales, performing other duties there. Um, and also the, I also have here listed, even though it's not mandatory until September of, of two thousand and eight, uh, the drug court and also associated costs with, with that. Uh, there is, uh, funding that the state, um, is, uh, providing for that. Uh, we're gonna, the district clerk, uh, when I spoke with him last week, was gonna be looking at, because there's additional fees, of course, that, that are gonna be imposed, uh, and what that's gonna generate, be sent to the state. We have to apply for those funds and then it's returned to us. Uh, the, the question right now is at what rate, if it's gonna be a hundred percent of the costs are covered or, or a portion of the costs and what percentage that is. And also the associated expenditures with, that are associated with that. And, and I provided it merely for informational purposes and just, uh, I guess, as we go along, uh, for, um, I guess guidance from the court as to what direction we're going to be taking with, especially with the courts and because it is a high dollar amount that's gonna be required and where they're gonna be located. Excuse me. Uh, the other, uh, unknown at this point is the autopsies and medical examiners. Uh, when the resolution of that comes about, how much that's gonna cost to operate and something we're gonna have to factor into this fiscal year's budget. Uh, as engine and healthcare, uh, every year there's a required, or there's an increase because of our, our tax revenues increase, so when that goes up each year, our requirement goes up, that's standard. Uh, with that, depending on what's, um, negotiated, I guess, with the contract, if, if the court continues with, with the proposal with Valley Baptist, if there's gonna be, uh, actual savings there, uh, as far as operationally, uh, or not. And if not, then we also have to consider the, the ten percent match for, for any state funding that, that may be available for next fiscal year. Um, a couple of issues as far as revenues, uh, the, uh, report that was, uh, done by Mr. Garcia on the bridge system, uh, one of the concerns is the crossing or the transfer from the bridge system to the general fund. Uh, that's something that I, I've spoken with Mr. Spurlet and they're working on the projected revenues for next fiscal year. Uh, currently on the revenues that I received from the auditor's office, there was, there was a decrease, uh, budgeted, uh, for the federal inmate reimbursement. Um, I asked him about that and, and he was going to verify. My thinking maybe that the reason that there's a decrease is because of the possible, or when the actual repairs cement on the Carrosales facility as to the possi, the relocation of inmates and actually having to reduce those numbers. I'm, I'm not sure if that's what that is, but right now in the numbers that I received, there was a decrease in the amount budgeted for eddies for the federal inmates. Uh, one, uh, item is, a couple of weeks when the bail bond board, uh, was here before the court and the, uh, I guess the discussion came about, about the available, uh, or the fund balance and the actual revenues that are being generated through that program. There's sufficient, uh, operational money on, on a yearly basis right now to actually transfer the administrative portion that's currently funded through the general fund to transfer it to that fund and would generate a savings of forty-four thousand dollars to the general fund. Of course, I would need direction from the court to, to actually do that. Excuse me. Uh, on, as I mentioned, we should be receiving the certified roll next week, uh, by the week after I hope, hope to have the effective enrollment rates calculated and presented to the court and then published in the newspaper and then after that, the fund begins.
Javier, when you're, uh, talking about the M and O in county buildings, uh, because of new buildings we've acquired, new ones, uh, where will you be looking at the offset of not paying lease payments on buildings we're currently paying leases? Will you do that when we start looking at how we're paying for the new building?
There, uh, I have the offsets as far as for this fiscal year, uh, because, uh, well, originally, uh, the, we were scheduled to move into, I believe, the Zivis building at the end of February, I think it was. Excuse me. Uh, there was already savings factored in for this fiscal year.
Okay.
Um, so for next fiscal year, it's only gonna be half of that, uh, or, or all of that. But as far as, uh, operations, M and O. But as far as operations, M and O, the staff from the other buildings, that's being transferred to that building. But in talking about here, that's, most of it is utilities, which would be the electricity, the sewer and water, because it appears right now, based on the bills that we're receiving for that building, that it in total, it's, well, it's greater than what the individual pieces were paying for utilities. And part of that was originally, of course, that building was for industrial purposes, and that's the way the account was set up and the meters were. Recently, it was converted to commercial, which should decrease it, and then when they transfer the account to, we, on all our buildings, the utilities are under the state power pool, and that account is gonna be transferred to that, so hopefully, there'll be some savings there. It's just that the last month's bill was twenty-four thousand dollars, and, you know, if you multiply that times twelve, you know, you have a big increase in, because that's almost what we're using in utilities in the jail, in Carrizales, which, so it seems kind of out of whack. That's twenty-four seven at Carrizales, and this is, you know, mainly eight to five, eight to six, something like that. So there's something, that's where I'm at right now on that. If, you know, the next month's bill comes in and it shows, well, there is a big decrease, I'll look at it again, but right now, I'm just going, based on the bills that we're receiving during construction and this first bill. And of course, what we know it's gonna be as far as for the communications for the building, which is greater because of the system that's in place.
Javier, motion to acknowledge Mr. Viall's report.
Same.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, any further discussion?
Yes, I have just two questions in regards to what was presented. I would like to see the actuarial on the health plan. Would that be something that you could provide, Javier?
Actually, I'm glad you brought that up. Currently, the county has engaged through, I guess, an action of the auditor's office, and this was a few months back, because of Gatsby forty-five, there's an actuarial that's going to be performed. They just requested the information a week ago, and they said it was gonna take them four weeks in order to complete it. So there's another firm that's gonna be doing that.
It would be nice to have that information.
Yeah, that's why the numbers I have is for informational purposes, just something to start thinking about.
And also, maybe you could do that with what John mentioned in regards to expenses?
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, we've moved a number of departments into the building-
Correct.
And just see what savings, or what costs we have.
Yeah, I can go back to what it was originally versus what it is now.
Right.
The number I have is based on this fiscal year, you know, completing-
Right. I would like to see something so that we'd know, you know, where we're at, and what we can project.
Correct. Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries, item thirty-four. Consideration approval of an order imposing vehicle registration fees for fiscal year two thousand and eight in accordance with Transportation Code Section five oh two point one seven two and Section five oh two point one seven three.
The current fee that we have is ten dollars, and I would recommend that we retain that current fee.
And this would just, is something that we do every year, right?
Yes.
We have to have it.
This routine, yes.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner, I have a second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item Carries, item thirty-five. Discussion and possible action to designate use of funds for application under Section three eighty-one point double oh four of the Local Government Code. Frank?
Judge and commissioners, we received notice that the state comptroller has unclaimed capital credits from the electrical cooperative that can be reimbursed back to counties like Cameron County. The amount available to us is not much, but it's eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars, and it can be used for eligible activities as outlined by state statute. I provided a copy of the state statute and what the money's gonna be used for in your packet. We don't have to make a decision today, the court's not ready, but the court will need to designate what the funds can be used for so we can submit the application to the comptroller's office. Just briefly looking at what is eligible, and based on what I know about some of the things that the county has done, I would think that, like, the learning centers that we have for some of the youth activities at Cameron Park would be good candidates for this kind of funding. But if you're not ready to make a decision today, I would hope that you can give me a decision next Tuesday.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we just have members of the court contact you? And doesn't mean the first one that contacts you gets all the money, okay? Have them contact you, just, you know, share some thoughts with them, and then maybe we can find an eligible allocation for it?
Okay.
Okay?
And then bring it back next Tuesday.
And bring it back next week, if y'all can do that. Javier? Yeah, please. Tina? No, from over there, Tina.
Juvenile probation.
Well, you can make the same phone call, too. Yeah. Is this about the allocation of these eight thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay. I don't want everybody just going wild, it's only eight thousand dollars, okay, but-
Why don't you get over here, honey, so that-
You can. And that's, that's, that's something that you all can do with Frank, and y'all just kinda work it out. And hopefully, y'all resolve this by next meeting, and then just bring it back, okay? Javier, motion to table.
Can we, can we approve it to designate the funds for eligible activities and bring the eligible activity next week?
If you wanna do that, that's fine.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Godza, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Item Carries, item thirty-six. Discussion and possible action on report from Elections Office regarding the process for providing absentee and mail-in ballot, as well as a verification and safeguard procedures in place.
Thank you.
The item on the agenda addresses the process of providing absentee ballots, which we are not going to address tonight because the, we don't use that process anymore. We will be addressing, though, the mail-in ballot procedure.
The what?
The what? The process for providing absentee ballots, that was replaced by the early voting, the two weeks prior to Election Day, and so anybody can vote. The absentee procedure was when somebody was out of town and was going to-
I specifically want to look at the mail-in, the request for a mail-in ballot specifically. Not, I know the absentee is the old blanket.
That's what was on the item.
Yeah, I don't wanna worry about the early vote, I'm worried about the, me as one, the mail-in ballot procedure.
Correct.
Who, how, what, where, all that stuff.
Okay, good, yeah. That's what we're gonna discuss today.
Ballot and mail process.
Let me introduce Norma Carrillo, she's my chief deputy, and Fred Garza, he's my information systems coordinator. They've both helped me here. Norma's been with the Elections Department for a good number of years, I would say somewhere around twenty-seven years, something like that. So she's been very helpful. And she's here to help me answer questions also that I may not be able to answer. There you go. The development mail process, what I have is an outline there now. You have that outline before you, and I would be glad to make available more detail on it, if you so wish. But the Elections Administrator for the county is always the early voting clerk for any general election, for any countywide election that is held at county expense, for all primary elections, for special elections ordered by the governor. And so it's the early voting clerk that always receives these requests for early votes, early ballot by mails. Who's eligible to vote early by mail? Any qualified voter may vote by mail, if he expects to be absent from the county, if he is disabled, if he or she will be sixty-five of age or older on Election Day, if that person is confined in jail, serving time on a misdemeanor sentence which ends on or after Election Day, pending trial after being denied bail, awaiting the outcome of an appeal of felony conviction, or unlikely to be released on bail before Election Day. Each qualified voter that wishes to vote by mail must submit an application.
Okay, that's, as we go through this, I may be asking you questions to specifically address those, because else I'd get lost.
Okay.
On the submitting an application to the early voting clerk, who submits that application?
The voter will submit the application to the early voting clerk.
And how does the voter receive that application?
The voter requests an application, picks up an application to fill out and submit it to the early voting clerk.
Okay, so any voter can come in and pick up one application?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's it? They can't come and pick up ten, or twelve, or fifteen?
I was gonna get right next to that one, because a voter can come in and request an application, or someone can come in and request applications for voting by mail.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
And, and what we normally have done in the past, policy is that we issue ten applications if they are requested for a particular election.
Now, when you say policy, is that a local policy, Elections Commission policy, Commissioners' Court policy, or is it your policy?
I would have to say it's an Elections Commission policy that was established some years ago, and we've been following that for some time.
Okay, so is the Elections Commission the only body that can change that policy, or can Commissioners Court change that policy, or can you change that policy?
I'm sorry. The Elections Commission may make the recommendation to Commissioners Court.
But who shall make the recommendation?
The Commissioners, the recommendation can be made by the Elections Commission and the, come and make the recommendation to Commissioners Court. Commissioners Court will take action on that recommendation.
Okay, but does it have to go before the Elections Commission before, or can the Commissioners Court ask that, to change that policy to a hundred applications, or five, whatever?
I would imagine Commissioners Court can do it.
Okay, but you don't know.
Well, I can't say that Commissioners, see, I could come over to Commissioners Court and make that request, that the policy be made to where only one application can be issued upon a request, okay, per person. What we do now is issue ten.
No, I know that, but I'm trying to get as to who can change, if we decide to wanna change that policy, who can change the policy? Is it, is it the Elections Commission? Is it us, or is it you? It's a very simple question.
It's the Commissioners Court.
Okay, so then we do not need to go to the Elections Commission to ask for a policy recommendation?
No, sir.
We can if we want to, but the Commissioners Court can, can make that decision any given time. Say, Roger, from now on, you can give out a hundred applications if you want.
If approved, the Commissioners Court, yes.
Okay, all right.
And there's no statute that, that addresses this directly, Roger, that you're aware of?
No, the, the code says that we can, we can issue, the Office of the Elections Administrator may issue only one application per request, although more may be provided, okay? And that's where I was going to say about what we, what we have been doing in our department. From the Secretary of State's office, though, they issue one per request unless it's a local race and there is a group or a candidate that's requesting the application, they'll provide one hundred applications for a local race, and they'll provide five hundred applications if it's a county election.
Well, and I know, like, the Democratic Party and the Republican Party and different organizations like that generally apparently ask for lots of applications-
That's right.
-because they set up booths and set up at different places, and malls and other places to sign people up and to get them to-
Those, Commissioner, I'm sorry, but those applications, sorry.
Yeah, I'm not talking about application for voting, but they also try to get people to vote early also, is it? See, that's- And if there's some mixture- That's where I see a problem. Issues. And, and I see the problem in having these blanket applications out there for early mail-in ballot. And let me ask, before I go there, let me ask you a question. When, when someone comes in and asks for a, ten ballots, or ten application ballots, what documentation do you all have, or what procedure do you have to identify the person that's coming in with the number of ballots, or the number of applications for a ballot that they're taking?
We keep a roster.
Okay.
And that roster is signed, excuse me, is signed by the person that's requesting those applications. It's got their name, and it's got the number of applications.
Now, are they entitled to only ten applications during the whole election process, or can they come? Well, tell me what, tell me what the process is.
The ten applications can be picked up by, by person per month, okay? It's not throughout the whole process. If they're doing it, someone can come in this month and request the ten applications that they're allowed to take. They'll come in next month and, and ask for an additional ten.
So somebody could come in on the thirtieth and ask for fifteen, then come back on the first and ask for fifteen more?
Uh, I-
I mean, right, I mean, it fits per month?
Well, yeah, it fits per month, and we're gonna go in from a-
Are you doing a calendar of thirty days?
Yeah, we, we figure it's thirty days. And, and we can tell by the roster that we've got and the signatures on our roster about-
Okay, so somebody, so you have a clerk that actually, when, when John Doe comes in to pick up fifteen applications, the clerk actually goes back and looks at the roster and says, well, you know, John, you picked up fifteen applicants twenty-eight days ago, so we can't give you until three days later?
It's not, well, we don't, we don't do it that specific, I mean, we don't go to the date, but-
Look, Roger, look, look, I'm trying to figure, I mean, you're saying a month, and I asked between twenty-eight and the first, he said, or twenty-eight, and he said, no, it's, you know, we go back and look, so now you're saying it's not that specific?
Well, no, I mean-
So is it thirty days or not? I mean, it's-
It's more or less thirty days.
Okay, well, you know, I don't like-
I mean, one day to another is very obvious, and even a week or two weeks, we'll know that the person has come in for applications, because the clerk that's taking care of it is the same clerk that was-
Yeah, no, I understand. Where I'm going with this, and we've all, we've all heard the horror stories about people actually winning elections because of the mail-in ballots and, and the politica vote and all that, so, you know, I think that, that, I believe that I, as one, wanna get a, get a handle on this so that we try to mitigate that type of process in the future. Why we don't violate any voting rights, and so if I'm stepping out of bounds, then I need to know, and the public needs to know, okay? So is, if we have a policy where we give, now, let me ask you, when they come in, when whomever they are, when they come in to pick up ten blanks, mail-in ballots, so you're only asking for their name and the number, so you're not asking them who the ballots, or who these applications are for?
No, sir.
Okay, you cannot do that?
I don't think they would know either. I know that they would, probably, they'd have an idea of who they're going to.
So you got people that are picking up, okay, okay, hold on. You got people that are picking up blank mail-in applications for people that they may not even know? Is that what you're suggesting?
For people they may not know?
Well, yeah, can I ask you, would they be able to tell you, this is for John, for Jane, for, you know, blah, blah, blah? And so they're probably, and I mean, look, I know the answers to these questions, but I'm, I'm asking them for the record, okay? So when they come in to ask for these, let's say, thirty applications, okay? You just give them thirty applications, you know, let's say fifteen one month and fifteen the next month, they sign off their names, but we, and I say we as a county, don't know who they're going to. They're just coming in and, and taking, you know, thirty applications as an example.
Right.
We don't know who they belong to, they take them from somebody else, they sign. Do you have a process in the office that verifies the, and every one, I mean, does somebody actually go and verify a thousand-plus mail-in ballots, the signature to the applicant, from the application to the actual ballot?
That's, that's done by the ballot board.
Okay, so they, they do do that, okay. But, okay, go on, I've got some other questions, but I think you may answer.
Okay, yeah, well, let me, let me continue on that, because-
No, that's fine, y'all, please, I mean, this is open.
May I say something before? Even if we tried to keep track of where those applications are going, the only ones we could possibly keep track of is those that are coming out of our office, not from the Secretary of State's office. The other thing is that, and that's- The other thing is that, an application for a ballot by mail may be made in writing, in their own handwriting, as long as it follows the procedure on the code. So, they could make copies and use the copies, they could do it in writing, in their own handwriting, just following and have the information that is needed for us to provide the ballot by mail, and we have to accept them.
Okay, well, let me, okay, since you said that, how, when someone comes in to pick up fifteen applications, how much documentation do they show you that they've actually got fifteen people that have requested mail-in ballots?
None.
Well, I thought so.
You mentioned that it was every, once a month that they could come and pick up ten, or whatever number. Is that in the policy? Or is that something that you all had to felt like you needed boundaries, or how did that happen?
As far as I know, that's the policy, well, that is what has been done in the department for years. I don't know how long it goes back, though, but that's been, that's been done in the department. It's a policy that's in the department, and that's what we followed.
Roger, you also indicated that a person could receive these applications directly from the Secretary of State's office?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
How many do you think they would provide them at one time? I mean, I don't know.
A personal, on a personal request, the Secretary of State would issue one.
Okay, that's just in the one if they request.
Well, why can't we use the same concept?
Yeah, we could, I mean, there is no problem, we've got nothing against doing that.
The issue here, for me, is, as we all know, there's always, we keep reading these horror stories of what occurs with mail-in ballot processes. And I will not mention the name of the county, but you know, there's not too far from us, where they've actually had some court cases associated with some voter fraud. And the whole idea is to keep the integrity of the election as clean as possible.
Absolutely.
And provide to those folks that are eligible the opportunity to vote also. But you can't wholesale things in a manner in which the Secretary of State must, for a reason, issue one out at a time.
But these forms, these forms are standardized forms throughout the state.
Correct.
And if I heard you correctly, it doesn't have to be this specific form. If I were to go in and get one from you, and go to Kinko's or someplace and make a hundred copies...
You could do that.
I could do that.
That's correct.
And once that got back to you with the signature, someone requesting something, you'd have to honor that, just like you would the more or less cardboard form that you provide as an application.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
The loopholes are pretty big.
Yeah.
It's hard to stop them.
It's very difficult to control it. Now, we said that a person can come in, let's say a parent, and I know a lot of parents have kids in college, but the kids actually vote in our county, because they come back home, this is where they vote. So, it'd be a simple process if, the justification, but I guess that would be a lot of paperwork, that people, let's say a parent comes in, and it's not for himself, but it's for the son in college, or the daughter in college, is that too much paperwork included?
No, normally, normally when we get requests like that for...
You mail them directly to the...
For children that are in college, or kids that are in college, you know, the parent themselves will come and tell us, "I need one because my kid's in college, or..."
Why do you not accept the fax to your office for a request for a mail-in ballot?
I'm sorry, Commissioner?
Why do you not accept a fax in form for a mail-in ballot in your office?
Why I don't accept a fax?
A fax in, in other words, you know, as an example, my son is in Austin, he downloads the application from the Secretary of State's office into his computer and faxes it into your office, but that's not valid. You won't send him, you won't send him a...
Ballot.
A ballot.
Okay.
Hypothetical, okay, I'm not saying this happens.
Yeah, but I believe that, if, I'm wrong, Norma, but if it's from somebody outside the county, and the ballot goes out, it has to be mailed back, okay? An application, and if it's during the time that early voting started already, it cannot be done, well, especially in person, it cannot be done. They can send it in, mail it in, they can send it in by common carrier, they can fax it in. Yeah, the application can be faxed, what cannot?
For a mail-in ballot, the application can be faxed.
By that, by the person requesting it.
By the person requesting it. Only the what?
You might wanna move up.
If they're outside of the county.
We can't hear, Norma, we can't hear you.
Roger.
So, the answer to my question was, you will accept a faxed-in request from outside the county for a mail-in ballot?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Before early voting starts?
Yes, as long as they do it sixty days before the election.
But you know, the bottom line is that there is no way we can control this, because they can make copies. One person can come in and you just give them one form, but they can duplicate it.
Download it from the Secretary of State's office.
Yeah, or download it, and they duplicate it.
The issue, not necessarily how many go out, but what we receive coming in is fully verified and confirmed that they are an outside voter, that's legal to vote in the county or pertaining to the election that is being run. But it doesn't matter the amount going out, because the one that comes in is what's verified and checked out, in the end, down the bottom line.
That's where the accountability comes in, when the forms come in.
Yeah, when the forms come in, and then afterwards, when they're compared through the ballot board process. But I know, I know there's been a big concern about the helpers, you know, the candidate helpers, politicas, if you wanna call them that way, because they might take those applications out, and the problems that have been out in other counties and so forth. And it's a big concern, yes, and we always worry about those things. But there are some things in place, such as, you know, there are offenses that are committed, and they are punishable. To follow through with those, the hard thing is finding out, the hard thing is being able to prove that, that that happened. But once that's, we find that out, there are ways of punishing these people and probably putting a stop to it.
Roger, how many, how many copies, photostatic copies do you, you know, would you get during an election for an application for a ballot?
Very few.
Very few, right? You know, what I would, and I'm, you know, and I think Commissioner Wood is absolutely right, I think there's, I mean, there's these huge, you know, loopholes in doing this, and I think that it's incumbent on us to try to, we're not gonna close the loopholes, but make it a little bit more challenging for those folks that are going in. So I would like to recommend that you only allow one application per person. And if they come in with a signed affidavit from somebody saying, "I, John Doe, want a mail-in ballot," then you can give that person that application. If they wanna go off and make photostatic copies, well, that's beyond our control, as long as the state is willing to accept those, you know, maybe they'll change the law someday, but for now, if someone wants to go out and make copies, well, then they can. I mean, there's nothing, but at least we've done what we can do at our local level to try to mitigate that. And then, if you do get a bunch of photostatic copies, those are the ones you may wanna look at a little bit more closely, as to make sure that the signature on that application matches the signature on the ballot that you receive. And I'm just, and I don't know, I'm just suggesting things, because, I mean, I think we all know what the challenge is, and we recognize that there's a lot of loopholes. But you know, I mean, where there's smoke, there's fire. And every single election, that is the common drumbeat, with the mail-in ballots, and who bought who, and who does this, you know, who does this and do that. We may not be able to stop it completely, but maybe we can make it a little bit more challenging for those campaign workers. You know, let them spend some money at Kinko's if they wanna do that, but why give it to them free? So, I would suggest, and I don't know if we can do that today with this agenda item, but, you know, maybe go back to the Elections Commission and visit with them as well. I sit on that commission, and that would be what I would recommend, you limit one ballot per person, unless they can bring you some kind of written documentation with the voter registration number, the person and address, and say, "You know what? This person is my dad, he's, you know, he's signed here," or a witness, or whatever. Just trying to make, not difficult, but just kinda keep them honest.
You know, but we spend thousands of dollars trying to get people to vote, and here we are, we're trying to limit access.
Well, but we're not limiting access to people that wanna vote. I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out, do we have a problem in fraudulent mail-in ballots? You know, how many mail-in ballots were cast in the last city election? About five or six hundred? I don't know, I don't remember the number.
About seven hundred.
About seven hundred? Those things have swung, you know, racist at the county level and at the local level. And you're right, I mean, either that or just open up the floodgates, and you know, give them, give all that you want. But I think if people wanna vote, they're gonna vote. You know, they're given plenty of opportunity to vote, they've got two weeks to vote, we have all these, you know, ways to assist them, you can drive out to the curb if they can't get out of their vehicle, we have a lot of things. I don't think this is discouraging people from voting, it's just making sure that the people that are, that truly want to vote by mail are given that opportunity. So, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what else to do with it. So I wanted to bring that up, and Roger, thank you, and I know you have more to go, but...
Judge, I'd like to say something.
May I insert something here before it goes in regards to that? I know it's a big concern, you know, and like I said before, it always has been, but right now, I would like to just let the Commissioner know that I am going to be coming to Commissioners Court for permission to buy, to purchase, which can be reimbursed by the state, by the way, to purchase a scanner that can help us scan all of our applications to register to vote. Those applications have a signature, and we can scan those, the ballot board will have a much easier job to verify that the person sending in the vote by mail is exactly the same person that registered to vote. Now, that is, that may take some time to do, because we would have to scan thousands and hundreds of thousands of applications. The original application, a change of address, and so forth, and the signature changes sometimes, so we get the most recent one. But that is, that is something that can be done towards that, to try and verify and make sure that we're not getting anybody in there that's not supposed to be voting, but is voting through a ballot by mail.
Signature verification is the bottom line to how you solve the problem, and this machine certainly might help that. Because you're not just verifying the application and the...
The application and the...
Yeah, and the ballot, you're also verifying that back to when they made the application for a voter's registration certificate.
I'd like to say something, Judge. You know, we have a lot of voter apathy in Cameron County. I know that I'm gonna be knocking on doors, asking for votes, and I would like to be able to go to Roger and ask him for applications, because you meet new people all the time, and they may not know they have the right to request their ballot by mail. And I don't wanna have to come to Roger every time, because you're gonna set in place a policy which is gonna limit me to one ballot every time.
You're gonna make copies. That's what they said, you can, I mean, I mean, you can make copies, they said copies are good, you can make them, and maybe that's what we ought to do. I mean, I don't know, I mean, you know, you'll do whatever you want, I just think that we have a, you know, there's a perception, there's a problem with this, and, you know, and if that's gonna be an obstacle, well, then you address it. But I think there's a perception out there, there's probably some reality out there, that there's a problem with the mail-in ballots. Now, if you're saying that there's not, that's something different, but I don't think we're trying to...
No, Judge, I'm saying that you are stopping or putting some sort of a wrench in our voting process, because a minute ago, you said, Judge, that by make, could we look into the photo, photocopies? Maybe that's something we need to look into.
No, no, I didn't say that, the Sec...
Yes, you did.
No, 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 I didn't say that, I didn't know that you could use photocopies till it was mentioned right now, I didn't know that.
So what's the difference if I, or John Doe walks in and asks for one?
That's my point, I mean...
You can handwrite it and make a copy.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, all I'm saying is, we need, I think that we need to do whatever we can to try to mitigate those things. If you wanna get a thousand ballots, go get them. But I'm saying that there's a problem here, there's a perception that there's some mail-in deficiencies, and I'm just trying to figure out how we can fix it. The Secretary, if the Secretary of State only allows one, you know, why don't you call them and see if they'll send you five hundred ballots, they'll only send you one. So why are we any different? But if you want more ballots, you can photocopy them, and they're just as good. You know, the problem is not gonna be with you, or with people that are doing it the right way, it's the people that are trying to circumvent a process here. So, if you want, if the court wants to say, "Well, you know, everybody except elected officials can only get one ballot," you know, that's a court's decision to make.
No, Commissioner, I have the solution for you. Come and ask for your ballot, make a copy, and then just keep one on file, and when you need one, you make a copy. So you won't have to be going to Mr....
I mean, this is not...
I don't understand, you're, it's the same thing, whether you give, whether he gives me one, and from there I go make five hundred of them, the question is, the perception is gonna be out there.
Well, but at least we can, at least we're not gonna be said, you know what, they can go to the Elections Office and pick up all the applications they want. You're right, it is a perception, you're right, you know, whether it's reality or not, but perception is reality.
So, does that mean that because I went and I make five hundred, then maybe Sophie Benavides is out there trying to get, you know...
Well, that may, that may very well be the perception.
And it may be the perception, but that doesn't mean that that is the case.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that may be the perception.
May I make a suggestion? Why don't you allow me to go back, find out what would be, what is being done in other counties, maybe? Also, what the Secretary of State thinks about doing something like this, or following their guidelines, before we go in and change something, okay? I'll do that, I'll get a report back to the Commissioners, and maybe we can act on it then.
You know, we don't have to decide this today. This was, because no one's ever brought this to the court, that I know of, to talk about a process. I've learned something, that you can make photostatic copies, I did not know that. I did not know that the Secretary of State, "Oh, can I give you one?" All I do know is that we give fifteen per month, and there's gotta be some accountability for that. I can't control what the Secretary of State does, or make photocopies.
But there is an accountability, the fact of the matter is that you can make copies, there is no accountability.
Yeah, there's no...
The intent, the intent is to encourage people to vote.
Yeah, that's correct, Commissioner.
That's the intent. You know, we have rocked the boat and bring the, whatever, all kinds of money spent doing all kinds of things, much less give out a piece of paper for someone to apply to get a ballot. You know, I mean, you know, there's gotta be a, you know...
I really don't think we could talk all night on this issue, and it goes back to the fact that it doesn't matter, people can make copies, so what's the difference if they make the copies, or if they come and ask for them at the office? I realize what you're trying to do, Judge, but the bottom line is, the people that want five hundred copies are gonna get them, whether they get them from our Election Office, or they make copies.
Well, see, what this dialogue does is, basically, it informs the public that that's what folks can do. Instead of blaming the Elections Office for indiscriminately sending out mail-in ballots and picking them up, hey, they can make a photostatic copy, now the public knows, it's on record that they can do that. I still believe that we need to do whatever we can do to mitigate that by, if you wanna make it two ballots, I mean, they can make copies, like you said, they can make copies, that's fine, but at least they're doing it, they're out doing it something, that you're not helping them with that. If you wanna go and knock on doors and give away ballots, that's fine, but you make a copy of it, I mean, that's what I'm, I know you're trying to say something.
I have a constituent over there, I think that...
You wanna come up here and say something? Because this is not the Red River issue yet, all right?
No, he's got something on his...
I just got some comments to make over this, sorry. I just got some comments to make over this, sorry. I just had some comments to make over this discussion. We're talking about one of our basic rights here. But I think something some of y'all are not getting, with this right, there's also a responsibility. Personally, I don't think we should have to go out and spend millions of dollars to get people to vote. If they're not responsible enough to go get registered and go vote, then they shouldn't be voting. Because that means they're not going to be educated on issues. But that being said, and I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, Rahelios, was talking about hundreds of thousands of mail-in ballots? Are there hundreds of thousands of mail-in ballots in Cameron County?
No.
I don't think anybody said hundreds of thousands.
He was talking about verifying signatures and putting them onto a list.
Oh, okay.
All together.
But, you know, but if somebody truly wants to vote and they need to mail in a ballot, they can be responsible enough to go do that, especially since college student, my goodness, they graduated from high school, they ought to have basic civics. They should be able to go down and do that without their mom or dad having to do it for them. And I know where you're going with this, Judge, I think, and I agree with you. I don't think anybody should get a ballot unless they apply for it. If they're not responsible enough to go down and do it, and Sophia, if you have somebody that needs a mail-in ballot, give them a sheet and tell them where to call to get it. And if they truly want to vote, they'll be responsible enough to do it.
But if I'm already out there, sir, I think I would want...
And I'll tell you, from my side as a citizen, when I look at a politician, I do it with a grain, many grains of salt to start with. And perception is everything. If Commissioner Tamayo went out and was passing out these applications, I would look at her with the jaundiced eye.
Did I do it, Jack?
Because I think...
Did I do it?
No.
No. I'm not saying, sir, that I would be passing them out, but if I was to encounter a home...
I understand what you said. I'm just responding to what you said.
Okay, and I appreciate that, but that's not the case in every...
But nobody here, I don't, nobody wants to deny anyone a right to vote. And if they truly want to vote, they can. But at the same time, with that right goes the responsibility.
And you know, sir, these applications, all you do is hand them over to the people. They put their stamp, they mail it in, and it's up to the elections office...
Well, the problem is, Sophia, is that there is a problem with these mail-in ballots. Everybody knows it. It's wide open to corruption. It's been proven it's corrupt, and therefore you have to have some kind of restrictions to stop that corruption, especially, and I'm going to be real specific, especially down here in the valley, where they go hire somebody out to politic for it. If you can't get somebody to go out and politic for you on a volunteer basis, they don't believe in you anyway. If you're going out paying somebody 10 bucks, five bucks an hour to go politic for you, they don't believe in you. They believe in that two bucks you give them.
And I understand what you're saying, sir. But I'm talking about myself going out and knocking on doors and letting the people know if they don't know...
As long as it's within the law, you can do whatever you like. I'm just telling you what the perception is from the, from most of the citizens' side of this bar. You have politicians on one side, you have citizens on the other. Perception means a great, great deal. Thank you. Roger, I think your suggestion was good. Why don't you call around to some other counties and see what their processes are? And again, you know, this is not to discourage anybody from voting, it's just trying to keep that process as aboveboard as we can humanly possibly do it. If we can't do it, we can't do it, at least we've tried. So, I'd like to get a motion just to go ahead and acknowledge Roger's report and then have him come back in a couple of weeks or, well, you've got plenty of time. Okay, just come back with something for us so we can look at, okay?
I will.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo? Do I have a second? Second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Gatsa, any further discussion?
I have a question of Roger before you go. You know, I mean, what is this?
That is the slip that is submitted, that is sent in with the ballot and the envelopes, the envelopes to insert the ballot and so forth. It's an instruction for the voters. That is done so that they can understand more the process and what they can, what they should be looking out for.
Is this something that is sent because there's a statute that requires you to send this out? Or is this something that you undertook in your office?
This is something that the office has done.
And this is okay as far as the Secretary of State is concerned?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, I don't carry. Item thirty-seven, discussion and possible action on the creation of a purchasing department as per section 262.011. I placed this item on the agenda. This was discussed ad nauseam on December the 12th, 2006. We're going to do it a little bit differently. I'd like to, first of all, get input from the court members and see if that's a direction they'd like to go. And secondly, if it is the consensus of the court to do that, to appoint a committee to study this issue. Martha, were you going to talk about this or are you going to wait for Rob or Mike to get back from their vacation? Right. Okay, and I have no problem with that. So, let's do this, let's...
Why can't we discuss it?
No, we can discuss it. We can discuss it.
I didn't, I didn't...
But, I mean, as far as deferring any action, you know, we're probably up the table it because we need to form a committee.
It's three votes to do whatever we want to do.
Okay, what do you want to do?
I want to discuss it.
Okay, well, let's talk. Do I hear a motion to discuss? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. Second by, well, yeah, you're making a big deal out of it. Commissioner Gatsa, any discussion? Now you can discuss.
What I'd like to know is where the rest of the commission is in regards to this.
You can ask him.
I don't, you know, I don't think we need to form a committee to study this. I think that we as a commission should be our own committee. I think that we are going to decide what happens with the department. And, you know, and again, with all due respect to the auditor's department, who the purchasing agent is under now, you know, I'm not proposing or suggesting we make a decision. But I am suggesting that, you know, I want to hear thoughts from other commissioners. You know, the whole intent for me to discuss this is anything that we as a county commissioner's court can do to improve the integrity, just as we discussed the mail-in ballots. You know, the purchasing department is something that we can discuss too. If we can improve the integrity of the purchasing department by separating that and making it into another department, I want to hear what others' thoughts are on it.
Judge, and back in December, as you recall, we discussed this. And at that time, I called the Texas Association of Counties, wanting for them to bring someone down and give us a workshop on various scenarios, counties that had the purchasing department under the auditor and counties that did not. They did not have anyone available with that type of expertise. They did give me names of some counties that had the same system we had and some that did not. And I contacted those counties, I don't have my notes with me this evening. And of course, the ones that had one type of system supported that and others that didn't. So, I think what we need to do is, like David said, discuss it among ourselves, what was in our back, as our background information. If I'm looking at this correctly, if this is one scenario, and I just want some clarification, where the purchasing agent would be under a, it wouldn't be under just the district judges, am I correct? I think, Pete, did you give us this information?
It'd be three judges and two commissioners.
It'd be three judges and two commissioners. And that group would be the ones supervising or overseeing the purchasing department. Would that, can someone answer this question for me? Will that give us better check and balances?
That's the question.
That's, you know, that's a subjective question, I don't know how to answer it. But I can tell you precisely what the law allows you to do, and that is, there are two systems. They're both in the Local Government Code 262-011 and 0115, and I'll refer to them as 011 and 0115. And the first system allows the commissioner's court to adopt a system whereby, with a county our size, there are three district judges and two commissioners on a committee. The, if you adopt that system, the district judges by majority vote elect the three of them that will sit on it, and the commissioner's court by majority vote elects the two commissioners that will sit on the committee. That committee performs two functions. They appoint the purchasing officer who answers to them, and they set the purchasing officer's salary. And they do have the ability to remove the purchasing officer. Then that section sets out the specific statutory duties of a purchasing officer so appointed. And I could go into those if you want me to. But then, secondly, 115 gives you an alternative that you can have, this board itself, this commission, can hire directly a purchasing officer and set the salary that would respond to the commissioners. And if you do that, that section refers you back to 011 for the duties of the purchasing, the statutory duties.
Which are the same.
Which are the same.
They're the same.
It's just a matter of who the individual reports to.
That's correct.
Right?
That's correct. And then it has a default position in the statute, that if neither of those happen, then the auditor is the purchasing officer.
And I'm going to assume that we've not had this committee of district judges and commissioners, and through default, that's the reason it is currently under the auditor's office.
Well, partially true. We did have, until 1983, in, I believe it's eighty-three, I've got the minute here, there was, prior to that, we did have a system where the district judges and commissioners hired and appointed the auditor. In 1983, we, by the commissioner's court...
Abolished that.
Abolished that system, and then by default, the auditor became the purchasing officer.
Well, I said, I learned something. I didn't know we had that until 1983.
It's in the minutes.
So, if we were to want to develop a purchasing department by either of the options that we have set forth, the 11 or the 15, the funds associated with that office operation are today under the auditor's budget.
That's correct.
And if this court wished to set up a separate department in the new accounting year, do those funds stay in the auditing department? Or can they be moved into the new purchasing department?
That's up to you, effective, if you set it up effective October 1, the new fiscal year, then you could redirect funds. You would have to set up, you're correct, you'd have another department. And you would, there are certain positions that I've asked Cog here to identify, and he has identified, that are in the auditor's office currently, that would, should be transferred to the purchasing department. There would be, you'd have to come up with a budget and split up the current auditor's budget as to what part of his regular, you know, supply items would then transfer.
Do we have to ask permission of the, now it's under the district judges, would it be an item that we would have to ask them for as far as the budget is concerned? Or we just set up the budget as we wish?
As you wish. You don't have to ask the district judges. They, I've already spoken with Judge Aristi based on this information and talked to him, but no, they have, as it now says, they really don't have any control over the purchasing department, what their control is. They hire the auditor, and by default, the auditor is the purchasing officer. If this court voted to set up either a 011 or 0115 department, then it would remove it from the district judges, except that an 011 would have three district judges on the board.
Two commissioners.
And two commissioners.
And the 115 would just have commissioners.
Yes, the commissioners' court, yes.
So, either one, I mean, it depends on reason, or am I simplifying this a little too much? If we were to change it, we would just, I mean, the budget, the people working in the purchasing department, I mean, that part of the budget would just automatically go to the new department.
The budget would follow them.
Yeah.
It would follow them.
Along with the materials. That would logically be what you would do, but you have control, this body has control of the purchasing, so at effective October 1, you can set it up how you want, how you deem it's appropriate.
And the whole intent is to improve the integrity of the departments and the segregation of duties.
That's correct.
It's nothing more than for perception. And we've talked about perception for about an hour.
Yes. And there is something to say for the size, the county has grown. And, you know, I just recently attended the purchasing seminar, I did, I think, county judge. And, you know, the people that were giving the lectures in that seminar were purchasing agents from larger counties like Denton County, Travis County, and, I mean, they are, they all have their own departments. And so, I think at some point, just due to the size of a county, you become, it's a very important function, as we know, and it's one that maybe needed to be separated. But that's a decision this court can make. Legally, you can do it in those...
We were at a seminar three weeks ago, and one of the topics was purchasing agents. Of course, there were small counties and large counties in the group. And, you know, the majority of the talk dealt with the smaller component, because there was a whole lot more smaller counties than counties our size. And when I asked a question, the gentleman says, well, you're from Cameron County, don't you all have your own department? I says, no. And then referred to Hidalgo County, they've set up a department, and they have their own department. He says, well, you're large enough to where you would do something like that.
I don't have any question about the integrity of the purchasing department that we have. I think it's a very good purchasing department, and the people that work in it are very good people. The reason I would think about perhaps making a move would be for a little more, you know, everything that we purchase, the county commissioners generally have to approve anyway. And there would be a little more direct input from the commissioners as opposed to going through the auditor system. If we request the purchasing department to go out for RFPs or bids or something, we would have direct oversight over that purchasing department getting that done and taking care of it.
So, that department would not be under the county administrator?
More of an operational, well, I think it would end up being under the county administrator, but he's directly under us.
No, that's not the way I'm reading this.
If we wanted to... We could do it either way. It could be directly under us or under him.
Well, it all depends what this court decides.
According to, at least 115, it would be commissioner's court.
We could probably act against it. A lot of things are under commissioner's court that are currently under the administrator.
You know, Richard, we've discussed this. It's evident that we've dropped the ball in terms of contracts and termination dates, and we just recently had it with concessions at the Esleblanc, I mean, all kinds of problems. But I'd like to envision if we decide to go down that route, assign that duty to your office and the purchasing. I mean, someone has to have a handle on the expiration date of these contracts so they know when they're supposed to kick in. Right now, as you've said, it's out of control. I mean, we don't know. Is that not accurate?
That's accurate. Right now, it's up to the, once the contract is let, it's up to the department head to administer the contract, which includes letting, who at this court know and purchasing know when it's time to go out for a new contract, any deadline, any renewal deadline.
You said that's up to...
Statute totally...
It's up to the department head?
Right now, it is. I mean, that's all, we don't really have a system, so it's just...
As an example, like Javier Mendez would be the one that would keep us abreast of whatever's coming up with the park system.
That's correct.
Each department, that's what you're saying. But see, again, and I know... But see, again, and, and I know we've improved a lot of, of what's, of the processes that we have in the county, but we still have a long ways to go. The fact that the directors or the, the head of each department was responsible for that, nothing was specifically said, this is the, this is the expectation, it's just that no, there was no one else to do it, so we held them responsible, without really making it clear that they were. I mean, I, I haven't seen any policy that says that that's the case.
There is none that I know of.
There's nothing specific. Of course, going back to accountability, you know, common sense would say, if no one else is doing it, that director better be on the ball and do it. I, I think in, in, in my conversations with, with the counties that, that had a separate purchasing department, they kept emphasizing the fact that there could be some specific responsibilities that otherwise wouldn't be there, and, and one of them had had the, the same scenario that we had, the auditor in, in charge of the purchasing agent, and he said sometimes there was confusion as to who was going to keep track of, they didn't specifically say contracts, of certain, of certain things that should, that they should be taken care of. So perhaps with a separate department, we'd be more specific as to, these are your responsibilities. And I think that's been one of our problems. We haven't been specific as to who we're holding accountable for what.
Well, there is, Commissioner, in the, in 011, as it describes the duties of a, of a statutory purchase officer, it does specify, I mean, you can read into there, the control of contract that specifies the control of assets, and it has a check and balance in that the purchasing officer has to annually take an ass, do an assets inventory, turn that over to the auditor office for verification. So there, there are things statutory, statutorily that are done to control these very items you're talking about, if you look at 011.
Well, that would be your check and balances right there.
But that's inventory, that doesn't necessarily address a contract.
There is also a wording about contract-
Which one?
It is under-
Yeah, it's, it's there.
Um-
It specifies contracts.
Yeah, I can look it up.
Can't find it, but-
The county purchasing agent shall supervise all purchases made on-
Give me the letter number.
Uh, it's on, uh, it's on E.
E, okay.
E, it's sub-E. It's, you, you, it doesn't specific, specifically state monitor contracts, but it states-
Well, exactly, there, there's nothing in here about monitoring contracts.
No, not specifically, no.
Specifically, I read the statute, and not once is the word contract mentioned.
Well, it's mentioned, it in E, it's mentioned.
Well, but competitive bid materials, equipment, to, with a purchase contract.
It says, and then, and-
In accordance with-
And it's delivered to the proper county officer or department in accordance with the purchase contract.
Shall supervise the purchase.
That's correct.
If you notice, not the continuum of keeping up with a contract or when it's due. The only thing that it refers to is supervise the actual purchase with that contract.
That's correct.
It does not say anything about keeping up with or telling this court when it's due.
No, you can do that.
But we can, we can, we can be specific.
We made that part of their duty.
We can add, we can, we can, we can assign, I mean, it's-
Yes.
It doesn't take a brain surgeon to figure out how we can fix this.
We should be, the county should be in fairly good condition on contracts. My understanding is that the auditor's office did hire a person in January that worked for about five months reviewing county contracts, and I haven't seen any results of it, because it's in the auditor's office, I guess, but my understanding was that the review was to determine what contracts we had valid, which ones were active, when they were going to be coming up for renewal and this type of thing, and that's just what I heard was happening with that employee in the auditor's office for five months. I don't know, since I haven't seen any results.
Well, was he under-
The auditor hired him.
Auditor's office.
As far as I, that's my understanding.
Okay, well, that's what you heard, though. That's what you heard today.
No, that's what I heard when he was hired in January, that that's what he was there for, to review contracts that the county had, because we have a problem, or had a problem.
Well, I, I think we do have a problem, and I have, time to time, emailed you all concerning the, the tracking of contracts, and you're correct. I mean, you can assign this, you can assign it to the purchase officer, you can assign it to the auditor's office, or as you may, but right now, the county judge is correct. I don't know of any policy that's out there concerning contracts, and it's just left to the, the department head who, who benefits from the contract to let this body know and the purchasing department know when they need to, to take any action.
Judge, I, I feel that we do need to go in this direction, but I think that I tend to believe, agree with you that we do need a committee to come up with other specific wording beyond what we see here, and then as a court, we can decide whether we want to go with the three district judges and two commissioners, or, or the Commissioners Court. But I think that we need, we need to start working on the specifics of other things that need to be added, other than what we see here.
The, we can do a couple of things. I will tell you that I, as one, would not, I would not like to see the Commissioners Court totally in control of the, of the purchasing department. Just because you never know what the future's going to hold. I think that the, I think one, one of the sections is having three district judges and two, and two members of the court. Now, that, that's by statute, can you add people, or that's the way it's got to be?
That's the way it has to be.
Okay. That, that, that would be something that, that, that I would lean towards versus having that department completely under the auditor, I mean, under the County Commissioners Court. You know, something you get, not with us, because we're all, you know, fairly sane at times, but in the future, you could have some, you know, unorthodox court, and who knows what'll happen, so. But we, we're not there yet. I think at this point, Commissioner Garcia recommended that we be the committee to discuss this. We are going to have to have some input from, from purchasing as to what they're doing now, maybe somebody from the auditor's office tells us what they're doing now. We can workshop it if you want. If, if you want to have a separate committee set up, who gave you this item? Did you just do this?
No, you, if you remember, you questioned, kind of think about it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And, and-
And as, as, I think part of the, part of the problem that, that you all had on December the 12th was that nobody had really contacted the, the district court judges, and I think as a courtesy, we should, at least maybe give them the opportunity to maybe have a member on the committee to talk with us. Not that they're going to, I don't know what kind of input they would have, but, but I think we can, if you want to do it as a court, I've got no problem with us being the committee. If you want to form a separate committee and have members of this court on that committee, along with the district judge and county administrator, budget officer, that's fine too. I mean, whatever, whatever the wishes of the court are.
I think maybe a workshop.
We can workshop it, and we can invite everybody in to talk about it, and I guess we're ultimately the, the committee, if that's what you want to do.
And whatever else we need to add to this and-
You want to do that? You want to, you know, workshop it next week and, and let everybody know to come in? We'll, we'll rob and be back by then?
Yes.
I mean, I mean, as, I mean, as a courtesy, I mean, we're, you know, we're, we're taking away potentially four or five people from that office, and I think they need to have, at least listen, and at least, let's listen to them as well. It's not going to hurt anything. So if we like, we can workshop it next week.
Yeah.
Put an item on the agenda, maybe about 4 o'clock. Whomever needs to be here is going to be here. Javier, you got, you got something?
Well, yeah, I got to work with Pete as far as setting up the schedule for the budget workshops for next week, because I do have about five or six departments.
We can do it in the morning, like we did today, I thought that worked out real well.
Yeah, moved along.
Yeah, it went, went well, so. We can do that, if you want to schedule a workshop for about 4 o'clock, 3:45 next Tuesday.
You can do it in the morning?
Well, if you want it, well, we've got, we've got budget workshops.
What about after, after the budget workshop?
Well, today, we went until noon.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's right.
We went at almost noon today, about 11:40, so if you want to do it right after lunch, we can do that too, if you want to do it.
All day?
But what, you know, if you want, if, if, if time is, if, if you want to have a specific time, maybe right after lunch, instead of waiting till 4 o'clock, it's up to you, whatever you want. What do you want?
Why don't we go with 2:30? Because the budget workshops will probably take all morning.
Yeah.
And that way we'd have a break.
Okay, you want to do that? You want, is that all?
2:30.
I will be out next week, Good neighbor Environmental Board is having their-
What time is that?
It starts at 8:00 AM next Tuesday and lasts till 5:30 next Tuesday.
Okay.
Wednesday, it's from 8:00 AM till noon. I hope you're going to be there to do a welcoming.
Yeah, when is that?
You're on about 8:35, 8:00.
Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Yeah, be there. We can start the workshops maybe at about 9:30 then, 9:45, I should be back by then, and then, is Wednesday a better date for you, or are you going to be over there all day?
I'm going to be there half day Wednesday.
Till then.
Yeah.
Do you all want to-
You can just set up a workshop and take a recess if you want to take a break, and then come back.
No, no, that's not the problem for me, it'll be for Commissioner Wood, because he'll be out.
All day.
Uh, all day Tuesday and half day Wednesday.
Well, can he leave his written remarks?
All day Tuesday.
With us?
Oh, we have to, we can have it Tuesday and, and, you know, or we can have it Wednesday at 2:00. What's good for you, for you all? I don't even know.
Hope to be gone, but it doesn't matter.
As long as we don't vote that day?
No, we won't.
We just have a workshop?
This workshop.
I'll be present for them.
Why don't we do it Wednesday, that way you can be here, okay? Why don't we do it Wednesday? What day is that?
Wednesday, 25th. Why are you talking about 25th? The workshop or the meeting?
Workshop.
Wednesday.
25th.
You want to do, you want to do a workshop Wednesday at, yeah, the 25th?
That's, that's the 25th.
At, um, at 2:00?
3:00.
You want to do 3?
Because it may run over a little bit.
Okay.
Finishing up the meeting, getting everyone off.
Okay, workshop for July the 25th at 3:00. Is that okay, or are you going to be out of town too?
And that is for the purchasing item?
Only for the purchasing.
And then the budget workshop Tuesday?
We do it Tuesday morning, like today.
Workshop for 3:00 PM.
But do that one about 9:30, okay? All right, sounds good, thank you. So do I hear a motion to, to table item 37, and with, with a part of that motion to set up a workshop for the 25th at 3:00 PM? Moved by Commissioner Tomayo, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, item 39. Consideration approval of an order for the imposition of, of an additional fee to the vehicle registration fee to be utilized for transportation mobility projects is authorized by House Bill 3437 and Senate Bill 1888.
Judge and commissioners, we included back up in the packet copies of both of the bills, and we also passed out a memorandum from the Regional Mobility Authority. And before I go any further, we do have one of our directors in the audience, Director David Garcia.
Another David, yeah, they're all over the place. Popular name.
The board met last week, and one of the items that was on the agenda was a discussion and possible action regarding House Bill 3437 and Senate Bill 1888. Both of these bills were approved and signed into law by Governor Perry. The board, after some discussion unanimously voted to recommend to Commissioners Court that an additional $5, an additional $5 fee being imposed on a vehicle registration fees. Funds generated from this fee would be used for transportation-related projects. Attached to the memo is a budget that was presented to the RMA board, and again, it's very preliminary. The bills state that the fee, if there is a fee imposed by Commissioners Court, it can be between $1 and $10, and it would start on January 1st of the following year. So we came up with an estimated fees that would be generated over a non-month period. Obviously, we need to sit down with our tax assessor collector, our, our budget officer and, and our auditing department to get a better feeling for that actual revenues that are going to be generated. But at the board level, we developed a, a budget on the different projects that we've been working on and that the board is going to continue to work on over the next couple of years. And we listed those projects, we're looking at a bridge master plan, and that cost is going to depend on the actual scope. If we do a detail or origin and destination study, if we looked at each crossing between Brownsville and Laredo, if we look at the infrastructure on both sides of the crossing, then that's a more detailed, and that's probably, we're looking at anywhere in the range of $200,000. East Loop is a project that the RMA is working on with the county and the city of Brownsville. The FM 509 project, we're currently doing a corridor analysis and environmental assessment, and we're hoping to be able to have that project environmentally cleared by the, by December of 2008. Those two projects, the RMA is in the process of considering them as a pass-through financing projects, and so we're getting our general engineering consultant to put together that application so that we can submit to the Texas Department of Transportation. On both projects, the TechDOT has told us that, you know, they don't see any funding available in, in the immediate future, you know, probably in the next 10 years or so for these two projects. So that's basically the only route we have if we want to see construction on these two projects in the next, you know, three, three years. We've had $50,000 for general engineering services, $50,000 for administrative expenses, and then we placed $100,000 in project contingencies, and this would be utilized on projects. You know, a lot of times, projects are under budget, sometimes they're over budget, so we would utilize this line item. Or if there's any other project that comes along during the fiscal year, you know, we could include that project in our, in our, as part of our list. This is what the board has in mind, and, and again, there was a unanimous recommendation that they made to Commissioners Court.
Judge, before we go on, I, I'd like to recognize one of the RMA members in the audience, which, David Garcia, thank you for being here.
Discussion.
I don't have any problem with what you presented, Mr. Supulveda, I just have one, one question or concern. Everything that the RMA has done from its inception to the present has been totally funded by Cameron County. Is that an accurate statement?
No, we, we've, we have partnerships with the different cities.
Yeah, as far as, but the cities are within the bounds of Cameron County?
Yes.
Not one cent has come from the state of Texas.
Well, that's correct. For, for administrative expenditures, if you all recall, when we submitted the application to the Highway Commission to create the RMA, there was two projects, actually, three projects that were in the application. One was the West Loop project, and the second one was the Second Cosway project. We received $21.6 million from TechDOT to do advanced planning on those two projects. But for administrative expenses, you are correct.
For administrative expenses, zero.
That's correct.
You know, I think it's time that, that we ask the Texas Department of Transportation to put money where they put us, because at the inception of this project, when we were looking at forming the RMA and looking at the operational aspect of the RMA, we knew that we were going to have to make a commitment locally to them. The commitment has been made by this county totally to making sure that we have a success with this tool that we have, that they bestowed, bestowed us with to make projects happen. But when, when they approved this, they also committed to becoming full partners with us and developing projects. And full partners includes seed money, was the word that was used at the time, to make things happen. And I think that it's time that we start asking them to be true partners in, in what's going on and possibly, you know, allowing the county to access some of the funding that should be coming in this direction that other RMAs have been privy to.
We can do that now. Part of the, I just want to make one clarification, part of the $21.6 million that we received, or that we will receive, we can charge administrative expenses if we track our time on, on, on those two projects, which is the West Loop and the Second Cosway. So, you know, my time or, or, you know, any county resource that we utilize, whether it's auditor, purchasing agent, or legal, if we track that time, we'll get that expense reimbursed by TechDOT.
Well, we need to have a mechanism in place whereby we're doing some of those things, because I know the amount of time that at least two of you are spending with the projects, and we've got to be able to recoup some of those dollars. Here we are, we're looking at $900,000 more to make projects happen, that a couple of them are their projects. They want them to happen.
And, and again, you know, some of this money we're going to use to leverage and get additional funding. For example, we've got the 509 project and the East Loop project, more than likely- More than likely, we're going to utilize that money to leverage funding for those two projects through Tech dot, uh, whether it's through a, a pass-through financing where we get X percent reimbursed by Tech dot. The, the idea is to try and utilize that money and leverage as much money as possible as we can for those two projects. And, and I think that's, that's the whole purpose, and I think the intention of the bills were to allow, allow us to, you know, use that money and, and, and get a good return on our investment.
And I, I'm in favor totally of it, just as I was on Project Roadmap and doing what we do with that. But I think they need to kind of come to the table with you guys.
And what do you recommend, Commissioner?
I recommend that, uh, we approve the...
No, but I'm, I'm talking about how do we make them come to the table at a higher level? Because one thing is say, let's do it. I mean, what are you referring to, the RMA or the court?
I'm referring to the RMA, because we, we have no control over that.
But we can be advocates.
Yeah, we are advocates.
Well, that's, that's exactly what I'm driving at.
I mean, we are advocates, and we keep striving to do that. But when there's projects that they want to see happen, is when we need to take advantage of the opportunity to make sure that, uh, I know you're going to be in the Governor's office tomorrow. You know, I would appreciate if you could advocate for us.
Well, see, this is what I was driving at. I mean, let's get specific. We're going to be advocates, exactly what is, is that we're going to do. So you've made your point. Our judge will represent us.
We'll, we'll be.
And express our feelings.
Tomorrow morning, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock tomorrow, right, Pete? Nine thirty?
Nine thirty.
I have something here.
Okay.
Well, a couple of years ago, I talked about the...
Yeah. So we, we...
That's what we're talking about.
We have not voted on it yet. We're still discussing. We're, we're in the, we're discussing. Do you want, uh?
Sure.
We're getting fees to death. We don't have taxes anymore. Mark White did away with those, but every time we turn around, we get another fee stuck on top of us. There's, uh, ten dollar fee already on the red, on vehicle registrations from the county, five dollars for the railroad and bridge. It was, some of it was really well spent. There's a bridge out near my house that goes, that's kind of a bridge to nowhere. There's a dirt road goes up to it that never gets graded. There's a dirt road on the other side of it, never gets graded. I don't think the farmers even use it. In the winter, there's a handful of hunters. But what I'm, my point is, y'all went through the fee almost so fast, I never heard, I, I almost didn't hear that. So y'all are real quick to put these fees on us, but you don't stop to think. I happen to drive, drive a pickup truck. That cost me seventy five dollars now. You add another ten dollars to it, that's eighty five dollars. And that doesn't count boat trailers. You get ten dollars on, you get ten dollars on every license plate. Now you want twenty dollars on every license plate that goes through this county. And you walk out on the street tomorrow, talk to a hundred people, I bet there won't be five of you tell, tell them they want to spend another ten dollars. I, I think sometimes it seems like y'all are real quick to grab money, but you don't really think of the repercussions of it. Ten dollars doesn't sound like much, but there's a lot of people in this county that are trying to pay their water bill, and they can't get, they barely get that done. They can't pay their light bills. I, I just, you know, the, the state wanted to see this done. I think the state ought to pay for it. I don't, I don't think it should come back to us. And, and like I said, it seems like you're not, you don't stop to think about what that ten dollars means to people. You know, I think, I think you really need to stop and think about that ten bucks before you approve it.
Thank you. Well, we haven't, again, we're, we're discussing. I think they've, he's tried to explain where this, this eighty eight cents a month is, is going to go.
No.
No, that's actually five dollars.
Oh, the five dollars, alright, you're gonna, alright, you're gonna talk about eighty eight cents?
No, 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 well, it, you want to start doing that?
Let's talk about what it's costing me on my property tax each month, on my school taxes.
It's not, it's not ten dollars, it's five dollars. I thought it was ten, because you said ten, I didn't, it's five.
Alright, still.
It's forty four cents.
Still, it's five dollars. Alright, that's forty four cents.
That's not, that's not...
Take, take my school taxes.
Yeah, that's not the dispute here. I think the dispute, I think you have to look at...
That's what I'm saying. You're, you're nickel and diming us to death. The reason you don't see more citizens here at night, because they're working their tails off to pay taxes. Fifty percent of what we make every year goes to taxes, to somebody, whether it be y'all, or the feds, or whomever. And one of these days, this cash cow is going to fold up. It's just going to envelop on itself. And, and I, you know, I just don't think y'all are...
Yeah, I think that the, um, and I, I certainly welcome your comments. I think it's important also that you may want to, uh, I know these meetings aren't as exciting as others, but I think you may want to start going to the, to the Regional Mobility Authority meetings, because that, hold on.
Okay, go ahead.
Because that, that's where this recommendation is coming from and where specifically it's going. Um, there's a lot of projects that, that this county has entered into years back, and, you know, a couple of years back, that we've made commitments on that are for the betterment of the county as a whole. The state's not going to fund more than what they can, because they're, they've got their issues as well, so we have to pony up. And I, you know, five dollars is five dollars. I understand that. But sometimes you don't have a choice. You have to do that for the betterment of the whole county, and I understand what you're saying.
I'll tell you what, Judge. You let me go through the county budget this year, you're talking about ten percent? I could double that in a hurry.
You got a deal?
We'll sit down.
I'll let you look at it. I've got no problem with it. Javier, make an extra copy of the budget when we have it ready. You and I will sit down, and, and every item that you're going to cut, every item that you're going to cut, that you're going to post cutting, then we're going to have everybody here, the, the, the elected officials, the people that live in the rural areas, and then you sit there and you tell them what you want to cut and why you want to cut it, and, and then we'll, we'll, we'll look at it. But I'll, you want to look at it? I'll be more than happy to do that, okay? You got my word. So Javier, an extra copy of the budget, and we'll sit down, we'll take a look at it.
Let, let me add a, a little bit also, uh, to this fee that we're talking about, the five dollars. And it's the, it goes to the RMA for their operations, as was explained here. But part of this is a result of the state as a whole and Tech dot as a whole not having the type of income they need to be able to provide the type of road systems that we all want. You know, and, and, you know, you're talking about roads you, you need fixed and things. Everyone is short of money, and, and Tech dot can explain it, you know, their shortage, because their tax on gas isn't the same. You know, it doesn't go up with the price of gas and all this stuff. Most of their money nowadays goes to maintenance.
Let me, let me, let me explain something, John. I don't think anybody's going to complain of money well spent.
I understand.
It's the waste.
I understand.
It's the waste. That bridge that's out there by my house?
Which bridge is that, Jack?
It's old, old Omito Road. Actually, Omito Road runs out in my part of town, part of the county, runs from one oh six to twenty nine twenty five. About a mile and a half before you get to twenty nine twenty five, you turn off, you go up this road between two grain fields, about half, three quarters of a mile, and you hit this bridge.
Is this, is this, is this an off, do you know where he's talking about? Is it an off-system bridge?
Yeah.
Is it a, is it a wood or a concrete bridge?
It's a concrete bridge. You probably spent a million bucks on it.
And, and there's another one on Old Port Isabel.
Yeah, I'm sure there's more than...
That Tech dot built about fifteen, twelve years ago.
I'm just familiar with one in my part of the county. So you're making my point for me. You're making my point for me. Why did Commissioners Court fund those bridges?
Commissioners Court didn't fund them.
The ones I'm talking about, Tech dot...
They were Tech dot bridges.
When they had extra money left.
They're called off-systems.
For future growth, you know, for future growth. Part of the problem, like in Brownsville, I can, I can give you two examples of Morrison Road, which is really needed to get traffic east and west. Uh, ten years ago, when it was put on the plans by the Municipal Planning Organization, which the county and all the other entities in the, in the Brownsville area are members of, it would have cost four million dollars to do both sides, the east side and the west side. Today, because it hadn't been done, today the estimate is fourteen million dollars. And no one can afford to do it, and, and it's a problem now.
You know, like I said, people only have a problem with spending money, because we realize we have to do it. And, and there's some things that the county spends money on. It's never going to affect me, but it's good for the county. It, and, and I'll bring up first, an example. I was down here sometime back, I don't remember when it was, on, on the park stuff. That stuff, it never really affects me, other than Tome Park, I put a boat in and out of the water. But I can see where those parks will help throughout the county. And we're going to spend a lot of money on them, and there's going to be more money spent on them than I think probably should. Uh, but, but, but that's not my point, John. My, my point is that...
Every time you turn around, there's another fee.
Every time we turn around, there's another fee.
Technology fee, security fee, everything.
You know, Jack, just, just look at your AT&amp;T bill and how he gets that.
You know, you want to start me on that.
Don't get inside of that.
I think, I think your next topic will be the, the next agenda item on, and, alright? Um, alright, thank you, Jack.
Okay, item thirty nine. Any further discussion?
The only thing I, else I'd like to say is, in regards to the RMA Board, they've done everything on a shoestring budget. And, and, you know, and, and carry that message forward, you know, to hopefully allow us to get more help.
Put that on your wish list tomorrow. Alright, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the recommendation from Mr. Sepulveda.
Okay. Move by Commissioner Garcia. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, item forty. Consideration and authorization for a report from Red River Service Corporation regarding the status of garbage and brush pickup schedule.
Judge, I had this item put on, because I had gotten numerous calls in the office and, um, wanted to get an update for all of us to benefit from and for the citizenry to benefit from in regards to where we're at and what we're going to be hopefully doing to improve the service that we're providing. And I think that Mr. Cooper's here, and he has a report for us. Yes.
And you need to give one to the court administrator. Judge, Commissioners, um, on behalf of Red River, I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity to, um, come by this evening and kind of give you guys a status report of, um, of where we are, um, with the, um, garbage collection and the brush collection in the county. Um, and what, I guess the best way to sum this up was to provide you guys some bullet points of some of the, the issues that we feel, um, um, are in most need to discuss with the court, and also just to let, you know, the, uh, the residents of Cameron County know that, uh, we are really, really working very, very hard to, uh, to, uh, keep things in place. And I, I think, just a little history of where we are today, I think, um, two years ago, the administration previous to now, Judge, along with a lot of other people, had put together and had a vision to reduce illegal dumping in the county, um, to put in a mandated standardized system which, uh, the residents in the county could get their garbage picked up. Well, um, here we are blazing a trail of a trail that never has been blazed before in the state of Texas. I think Cameron County was one of the first counties in the state of Texas to implement a countywide mandated garbage collection service. And with that, we have, um, I think, run across a lot of bumps in the road in regards to getting this system as efficient as possible. Um, we have taken a lot of different approaches in regards to making this system solid, sound, and efficient for the customer. Um, and I think we would all agree, there are lots of things that are different providing garbage collection in a municipality in the state of Texas, and also providing garbage collection in the unincorporated areas of Texas. Counties do not have the enforcement mechanism that most municipalities do. We currently service, um, I think, four municipalities in Cameron County, Los Fresnos, Port Isabel, Combs, and Santa Rosa. Those municipalities have much more enforcement right, much more ordinance writing authority than Cameron County or any county in Texas. We provide a weekly garbage collection and monthly brush and bulk collection to those municipalities, and we barely, well, I mean, we don't experience near the problems which we have encountered with Cameron County. Um, it's unique in that, and with that said, I've, I've provided each and every one of you a bulleted list of just some of the things that I think are most pressing to you, to each Commissioner's precinct, and Judge also to you and your administration. And the number one thing, um, are phone calls.
Yeah.
Um, and what we have provided to each and every one of you guys is a, is a rendition of missed pickups from April to June. And what we have done with those is we have separated those out, and those are all the phone calls that come into our office that are logged in through our system, which is soft pack. Yes, sir. That, that, uh, kind of attachment to what I provided. And what this shows the court is, through, um, April, you've got brush, bulk, and trash misses. You've got for the month, month, for the week, week, and the percentage of who we bill as a customer. So for the month of April, you see those totals and those percentages to the far right column. That's the basic, the percentage of the customer base of the calls that we receive.
So this, uh... This list here, what this means is that in April, you got a hundred and fifty eight calls of missed brush?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So then, if you'll notice, that it seems to increase every month. Your percentages are getting larger. Uh, as an example, in missed pickup trash, you had two hundred and thirty seven in April, and then, you know, four hundred and ninety three in June. You had, uh, in one week, you had fifty five versus a hundred and fourteen. So is this, is this a good trend?
It's not a very good trend, Judge, and the reason being, I've got some, some things I want to explain to the court to kind of give you guys some explanation of why these...
Why it happened?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You betcha. Um, and, and really, for a contract of this size and magnitude with the enforcement as it is today, um, these numbers, I know they look high, but in reality, we've got, we look at the numbers of being numbers of, of households that are calling for a complaint, but we look at it as a percentage basis. Now, we look at it as an organization, now, what can we do to better reduce these percentages? Um, and it's awful, it's also very interesting in the garbage business, when you, um, receive phone calls from customers, either you're going to get a complaint, you're going to get a billing question, you're going to get a new service question, you're getting numerous things. Well, um, this past billing period, we, um, had sent out over forty-five hundred letters to customers in the county for non, not notification of past due bills. And it's, 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 in, in spike in phone calls is all based on timing. So we had a timing issue where we submitted these notices to forty-five hundred customers who have never paid us. And, and also, following up with that, those forty-five hundred letters, we've got everyday phone calls from the missed pickup to numerous things like that. So, so there's lots of spikes in that. Um, the second week of every month, when we do billing, since we do billing monthly, um, we always get a spike in phone calls the second week of the month, because that is the, that is the month in which customers receive their bills. So a lot of times, customers are going to have questions in regards to their bills, in regards to the fees that are on their bills, or, or any, any magnitude of issues. They're also going to call for payment arrangements, they're going to call to get their, uh, to pay their account with a credit card, um, there's... Um, there's lots of different things that spike and increase phone calls. Um, and one other thing that's kinda unique to how we do business is our, our, a lot of our, our payable department for billing is in Austin. We've got four, um, individuals in Austin who can take phone calls and, um, get customers', um, um, bills paid much quicker than having to bog down our customer service reps in Los Fresnos, who handle mostly service calls. Um, some of the things that we want to, um, inform the court of, of how we're going to put some solutions in place to help mitigate some of these problems. What we're going to, um, we're gonna add two additional phone lines to our office in Los Fresnos. Um, we're, we have added two additional customer service representatives to field the phone calls. Because what we see is we have a spike in phone calls depending on the week of the month. Or any type of weather event that could have happened. We've experienced an incredible amount of rain over the past ninety days in Cameron County. And when we experience rain like that, there's a lot of roads, our toll roads in Cameron County, which our trucks cannot pass. And when they cannot pass, we get a complaint.
I think, um, I don't know, a couple of months ago, did, we'd asked that you put a Spanish version on your, on your answering machine, or whatever it is. Did that ever happen?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so that's already in place.
It's been there since the inception of the project.
Okay.
Yeah.
You had, you had a Spanish message coming, and press one for English two, for, how, how do you do that?
No, 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 the message, when it's, when it's, when you call the message, it gives it in English and also in Spanish. It tells you what extension to dial to get to what department you wanna talk to.
Alright.
Um, and, and we've, we've learned some, um, tricks of the trade on that too, because that's also been a demanding part of, the uniqueness of, of the project here in Cameron County. Um, something else that we have, um, implemented is, our, our customer service representatives, we find that during the daytime, when, when customers call in and have complaints, when we return the phone calls, sometimes during the working hours, it's very, very difficult to get ahold of people. So what we've been doing, from five to seven o'clock in the evening, um, our customer service representatives have been working, um, over and above the call to answer phone calls when people get home from work. Because it's much easier to catch people from five to seven than it is sometimes from, let's say, um, you know, one to four, or, you know, nine till eleven. So we're looking and trying to find the best ways to, to get in contact with our customers. We know we experience a lot of phone calls.
One of the, one of the concerns that, that our office has heard, and, and I'm sure you've heard it before, the, the length of time, from the time that you receive a phone call to the time that the, the phone call is returned, it's weeks. Um, and I don't know if that's true or not, but I mean, I've heard it from more than one person. I've heard it from several people, that it just, again, I, I refer you to the letter to the editor that came out of the Brown's, in the Harlingen paper today, uh, an individual from Royal City, I think it was.
Yes, sir.
Royal City that said he, he, now, this person said he called twenty-seven times, and finally got a return call back, I think he said two or three weeks later. And that's just one person that had the, I guess, the courage or the time to write a letter to the editor. Who knows how many more there are out there? So, is that happening? And if it is, why is it happening? If it's not happening, then why would somebody make something like that up?
Um, Judge, twenty-seven times? Uh, we went and looked back through our records. We have, we don't have a record of that gentleman calling our office, but we are in the process of talking to our answering service, tracking down his telephone number, and seeing how many times he dialed in. Because with our answering service, every time a customer calls in, an email is placed back to our office, and every telephone call is recorded. So we can go back and track and see if there were twenty-seven-
You may wanna do that.
We do.
And I would encourage you to, to get a copy of that article, uh, locate the gentleman, and, and personally call him, and just tell him, hey, we don't have a record of that. And show him if you need to show him, because maybe it was ten times. But that's nine times too many.
Sure, and when someone's upset, and, and even if, you know, if I was wearing the same shoes that he was wearing, you know, I would probably be in the same position of saying, well, whatever the number could have been, it could have been a large number. But I, I know one thing, Judge, you know, we've had a lot of people that had the courage to, um, to, to call the television stations, to, to write articles in the newspaper. And that percentage of a hundred, I'm not sure what it is, but I'm sure Judge, there are a, a large percentage in this county that maybe won't go to that, go to that level and call the television stations, or won't write newspaper articles, that really appreciate the service that this county has put in place. We do get out of always more than you know. I think there's a lot of occasions that we have gone over and above the call of duty to do things. I know lots of times, we have done lots of things at Cameron Park. Um, John, with you and your precinct, I think we've done that in lots of other precincts. But I know we do have problems. Um, we did have, experienced some turnover over the past sixty days with our organization.
You know, but you're not gonna have a whole lot of problems in a, in an area like Cameron Park, because the homes are right next to each other. The streets are paved, uh, not unlike the rural areas where the homes are far apart. Some of the roads are not passable. Uh, Cameron Park's a little bit different. Like, like any unincorporated limit, you know, the homes are, you know, pretty much, you know, almost like, uh, like, like they're downtown, they're right next to each other. So that pickup should be relatively easy. So I'd be real surprised if there was a whole lot of phone calls from Cameron Park. But I don't think you're getting the calls from Cameron Park. I think you're getting them from the more rural areas, uh, located on the, on the north, you know, northern end of the county. That's what I think is happening, but I don't know what you all are experiencing.
And Judge, we have got a lot of phone calls in, in the past from Cameron Park.
Well, then you shouldn't be getting calls from Cameron Park.
Well, we're, we're not now.
I mean, that's a fairly easy neighborhood to-
You're talking about an isolated event, where I'm telling you, those people in Cameron Park are extremely pleased with what our organization's done. Because if you were to go to Cameron Park, Cameron Park before this service was established, those bar ditches. I mean, there was stuff all through those things. We went over and above the call of duty, went over and above our contract responsibility, picked up more than what our contract required us to pick up. And we did that because we wanted to clean that, that community up. And we have, I think that has been a, a big part of what we've done. And I guess taking the difference from Cameron Park, where you've got some density, to the difference in rural area where you have larger stops, I would agree. You're going to have, and what we've experienced, there are some homes on the maps that we've got provided, that there's some of those homes are not on the maps. The, the growth of the county, sometimes, you know, the, the growth is way before the maps. So sometimes when we have a map, when we go in there and have our routes on there, we have a lot of homes that are added to that, they're not on the map. So we are continuously adding those homes to the maps. That way, we don't receive those missed phone calls that we've experienced over the past ninety days.
Do you return any phone calls on weekends?
Not on Saturdays.
On Saturdays, okay.
Yeah.
And I will say, while we're talking about Cameron Park, that is probably a unique area, because it is so highly densely populated. And, you know, I know, the first time I was out there campaigning, it wasn't the first time I was out there, but the first time I was out there campaigning, I'd sometimes go around to the back of the house, because that's where people would be at, to talk to them. And there would be piles of, uh, garbage bags full of garbage. And I'm sure, you know, maybe those people haven't called to thank you, but their neighbors have. Because that doesn't exist anymore. And any, in any densely populated area like that, the service is, is, uh, probably more appreciated because y'all have the ability to pick up more efficiently there.
I would agree with what the judge is talking about. It's tough out in the rural areas where homes are a quarter of a mile or half a mile apart. And roads may not be in the best condition.
Sure.
But those folks are paying the same service-
And they want service.
You know, the residents of any unincorporated area that, that's high density, they're paying the same amount of money, I guess, and they expect the same type of, of service. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sure, I, I completely agree, Judge. Um, some of the other phone calls, I guess we just kinda got into, we, you know, we had some, we had some turnover. You know, that's, that's by no means an excuse, that's just a fact of life, and that's what we experienced. And we brought, uh, truck drivers in from other contracts, from Nashville, Tennessee, from Fort Polk, Louisiana, other servicers, we brought drivers in to help us when drivers decided they needed, wanted to do something else. And at that point in time, we've got to then put another employee with that driver to basically show him where the routes are. And it's just inevitable, Judge, when we have that type of, um, problem, it's, you know, unexpected, we're gonna miss some homes. Because those drivers that aren't familiar with those routes out in the counties are gonna miss some homes. And there's a lot of homes off a main road that go back a mile, back to a different road, pass a bridge, that are just special pickups. You know, the drivers that were with us for a long period of time, it was like the back of their hand, so it was real simple for them. Now we're having to retrain people to make sure we pick up those homes on those small, small roads. Um, moving, moving forward, um, after we receive a missed telephone call, either from our answering service or through our own, uh, customer service representatives in Los Fresnos, we create a work order through our, um, software system. And those work orders are basically placed in with that particular route driver for him to make sure that those missed calls are picked up. Um, currently, we're, we're behind on some of those, Judge. And our operations folks said by Sunday that we should be caught up with all of our missed calls. Um, because once we get a missed call, and then the route day changes, the routes and the trucks change. So we've gotta make sure we get those customers picked up, and then get back and pick up our missed customers. Our supervisors are also, we've had additional trucks on the ground with supervisors, they're actually picking up garbage as well, to help compensate for the, for the missed collections that we've experienced. So we're doing a lot of different things. We're bringing people in, we're adding equipment to help get, get over those humps. And we're training some drivers, and we're gonna do some more incentives, uh, with our employees, to help keep a good, a good, you know, cohesive group of employees to help service in the county. Um, we talked a little bit about, um, we wanna always, you know, always provide you guys some of the issues, and we also wanna provide you guys with some of the solutions. I've talked about a few of those, um, um, additional trucks. And we also, um, I've spoke with, our, our organization had an intercompany meeting today. We're also going to visit with the customers where we had a missed collection, and we're going to credit accounts on an individual basis where we failed to provide the customer the service that they expect and receive. And we're gonna be working on that, it'll be an ongoing process for that. That way, we can make the customer whole for the service they did not receive. Um, the answering service, I, I know that's a little unique sometimes. I know lots of people in the county would much rather speak with a, with a, with a person. Um, sometimes that's just not possible, sometimes depending on the call volume, time of day. Uh, our answering service is a local answering service, it's out of McAllen, it's out of Edinburgh, Texas. They have twenty people that can answer the phone at any one time. So, you know, that's just an, an additional ability that, uh, I think it's standard in the industry, um, to help and have additional folks answering telephone calls for you. Um, so those are some of the, the issues that have, have been pressing to us here lately. And I think the last time we met, Judge, I think it was right when you, when you kinda took over, we've had some issues with brush collection, we had some reroutes and some schedule changes. I think, um, our, our brush collection's getting better. The schedules and the maps that we presented to court have become, become much more efficient for us. And, um, the customer has a better, um, idea of, uh, when the collection's going to be expected. Um, the, one thing that we still, um, we still have an issue with or a problem with, um, Commissioners, is the set-out requirements of brush collection. Um, we are in South Texas, we're in a growing season, that's three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We agreed to, you know, a, a contract amongst ourselves in good faith and a partnership, and we agreed to some, some restrictions on what people could set out and what they couldn't set out. Um, and, and, and it's not a, it's a pressing case, because sometimes it's abused. Um, not a, not a large percentage, but when, when it's abused, that the complaints are going to increase, and there's gonna be some missed collection calls. Because five, you know, five cubic yards is what, what we're gonna pick up. And we're gonna pick up our five cubic yards, and at the point in time it exceeds that, you know, we're, we're more than willing to pick up additional material. But when our drivers are routed for a specific number of homes per day, and we've got extra material, it's hard to pick up that, at that same time, and, and make sure we pick up every customer on that particular week, or that particular day of the collection, so-
Let me ask you, just real quick, let's assume that somebody puts out six cubic yards of, of brush, and your, and your driver bypasses it because it's six cubic yards. How, what, what internal control do you have that's going to assure that that driver is gonna go back the following day, or, when does that driver go back? If, if he's got a full schedule?
Following month.
You know, does he go back, I don't know, I mean, does it's the following month? Or, how do you know? Because a lot of the stuff that may be occurring, you all may not know, because the drivers aren't telling you that. A lot of the phone calls that you're getting is not so much because your lack of performance, or the lack of performance of your drivers. So if, let me go back, if, if you got six or seven cubic yards of brush, and, and the driver can eyeball it and say, hey, that's too much, and they keep going, when do they go back to pick up that seven cubic yards of brush?
Um, Judge, you know, if, if it's a point in time where it's six, you know, those drivers have got to make a snap decision very, very quickly on those trucks for efficiencies of what we do.
That's not my, my question is, when do they go back? And how do you know when they go back?
Well, what we do, Judge, is we tag a customer when they're out of compliance with the set-out requirements. Those customers are tagged. Um, with a tag, like, if he's out of compliance, they're out of compliance.
Okay, so the driver actually gets down, has the time to get down and tag this?
Yeah.
Okay, wouldn't it be easier just to pick up the trash?
Well, you know, I guess-
Or you're saying that, you know, I mean-
It's an educational process.
If it's twenty cubic yards, you're gonna educate the truck.
Yeah, no, I understand, so, I, my, my question is really, if, if they bypass a, a home that's got, as Commissioner Gasa put, that's a twenty cubic yards of, of brush, does that brush just stay there forever? Or, let's say you tag them, and then, then what? I mean, when does that driver go back, or who picks up that twenty cubic yards of brush?
He gets picked up five cubic yards every month until it's picked up?
Every month, so-
Five cubic, every month.
Every month. Now, how do the drivers know, I mean, is there, just kinda educate me. How do they know what five cubic yards is? Do they have like a machine, or like a weight thing, or what? Or they just eyeball it?
Basically, I guess, the easiest way to do it, and the way we've instructed our driver, it's the size of a Volkswagen. You know, it's basically, it's, there, there is a length and height and width, and there's a big form to it. But as you guys know, it's sometimes difficult to get that right every single time. But if you, if a customer's got twenty cubic yards, they probably know they've exceeded five cubic yards. And we're more than willing to come back out there on a special pickup and charge them, pay as you throw, an X amount of dollars per cubic yard.
So then, let's go back to, to a realistic brush. Let's say it's six yards, or a little bit larger. Let's say it's a Ford Fairlane, not a, you know, it's not a Volkswagen bug. Uh, they just, do they pick up the equivalent of five cubic yards at that point in time? Or do they just keep going and say, the heck with it?
No, they'll pick up the five cubic yards.
Okay, so they'll pick up five cubic yards, they'll move on, in the following month, they'll come back and-
Yeah, but I'm sure there's lots of isolated cases, you know, if it's six or something, they're gonna get it. Just because there's no need to come back, it cost us money or the phone call. I mean, it's so hard to say exactly what they pick up. But we had to set a requirement because of the distance to in front of landfill, the capacity of trucks. If you don't set a limit in a rural application, it's gonna be very, very difficult to maintain the schedule. One other problem, I think, is a, is a, it's just a-
Just, real quick.
Okay.
So every time that you are unable to pick up the trash or the brush, they leave one of these, or they're supposed to?
Yes, sir, and, and that's just accountability, to let the customer know that we did stop at the house, there was action taken, and this is, please call us back, and we will basically inform you of the, the set-out, or what you need to do next time. It's just a way to educate the customer, to verify to them that we were there, and we marked and told them how they were out of compliance, and that, um, please call us, and we can, you know, make arrangements to pick that up. And we have another tag, Judge, for brush collection, and that is for garbage, and I have it, I'm just telling you-
That's alright, I mean, it's something simple.
Yes, sir, exactly, and it, it's, it's specific to brush collection, and some of the things that we would experience with brush collection.
Okay.
Um, one of the other things, and I think, um, is a big problem with brush collection, is placement. In front of your house, by your container, but what we, what we face is, the material is set in a vacant lot, in a right-of-way, across the street. We do not have the ability to verify that is that customer's brush. There's a lot of people, there's a lot of brushes that's dumped on the sides of the roads. You know, and we, we just can't be expected, and we're, to pick up brush that we can't verify. So it's, it's an ongoing problem, and, and, and there's no enforcement mechanism that this contract gives Red River to do that. We can call, and, and one thing that I think is a, is a big thing, is, uh, we would like to, to get some resolution on it. Now, who's our point of contact with the county? Who enforces our contract? Who are we to go to to help us verify a complaint? Because if, if we get a complaint, and we take action on it, and the customer's not happy, they're gonna call the Commissioners, they're gonna call you, Judge, they're gonna call your staff, they're gonna call Peter, they're gonna call David.
Well, the, the point of contact, for, for you or for the residents?
For us.
Whomever calls you, I guess. Because normally you get a call from, from one of us if there's a complaint. So, your point of contact at that moment in time is whomever calls you, from this court, I guess, or, or, or they're designating.
Well, that's why I think we need to look and seriously consider a more centralized way to communicate. Because what we find is, we, we just need to have a better record-keeping ability as far as the complaints that come into the, to the Commissioner's office, that come into your office. That way, when we get those, we can verify them with what we have.
But you know, wait a minute. By the time those complaints, I believe, get to our offices, is because that person that's calling believes that they've exhausted their efforts of trying to contact somebody at Charles' office. That would be my, my guess. I just don't believe people are gonna call me, or, or any member of this court, and, and we're, we're there for, no- they're, no, they're going to call you first, and then if they don't see something being fixed, then, you know, they go up the food chain and, you know, I guess we're next, okay? So, I don't believe that I'm the first responder, so to speak, or this member of this court gets called because their brush didn't get picked up. I think they're going to call your office first and there's no response after a reasonable period of time, then they're going to call their commissioner. That's what I think, unless I'm wrong, but I think that's what's happening here.
I think you're straight on, but, you know, once we make a decision, our supervisor, in-house people of that customer, if they're not satisfied with that, you guys are going to get the phone calls, there's just no way to stop that. You know, we don't have any mechanism to enforce what we ask the customer to do, other than to not pick them up anymore. And then you have the case of legal dumping, then what is the county going to do with legal dumping?
Well, I think that one of the things that you need to look at is, we had an individual early on in the meeting, which was Chris.
Yeah.
He's already gone, but, you know, he tried to resolve an issue with billing.
Mm-hmm.
And he went through a pretty exhaustive process.
I spoke with Mr. Escobar, just...
I hope you did, I hope you did.
I sure did, I did, and we're visiting.
We have another individual that was referred to you, that, you know, the lady brought me a notebook of, you know, everything from money orders she bought at HEB to payment stubs, to copies of her checks, you know, and she's presented this, she's gone to Los Fresnos, but got no resolution. And this is like ongoing for a number of months at a time, and you just send out another 4,500 past due notices and some of these folks again get the notice with that, with no resolution, you know, and those individuals are the ones that call us and come see us and expect for us to do something about it. It's just like the percentages that you talked about early on, you know, we had 25 missed pickup in bulk in April. Well, it's only 0.15 of 1%, but you know what? It's 100% of somebody's trash. And that's all they care about. And that's, they're paying for that service and they want that to happen. And they want to, I know that they're calling your offices first. They tell us, "We've called and we've called the offices." By the time we, and that's not to say that some folks don't abuse the system either, because I know that, you know, that's human nature. But if there is communication, I don't have anyone else to go to except to you all as a commissioner to try to resolve an issue. That's it.
And I think what we also need to do is, we need to kind of review our processes too and look to see if there's any shortfalls in what we're doing, and we're continuously looking for those. But I think also what we get into, I think when you have problems like these, you've got to sit there and realize what other solutions out there and fix some of these. You know, when this program first got started, the county was going to bill everybody, then we had, we got together again and we assumed that responsibility. When you bill monthly in a rule setting, payments, receiving payments, billing is confusing. It just is. There's other mechanisms to get payments, to reduce phone calls, you go to a quarterly billing, you look at an annual billing. There's ways to reduce those phone calls, but when you're billing 16,000 customers every 30 days, guys, you're going to experience phone calls because people are not always going to agree with the bill they receive and other things. And there's a lot, you know, and the trash bill, guys, it's 20 bucks a month, numerous people pay 35, 40 bucks a month for a cellphone bill. So, I think, you know, we're at, I think we're at a point where we all need to sit here and look what we all put together as a partnership and find ways to make it better. I think there's some viable ways in which reducing billing phone calls monthly make it a quarterly billing. Most, before the county system, most of the private haulers in the county had a quarterly billing mechanism, which billed four times a year, which reduces telephone calls, which reduces complaints, they know what they're going to pay quarterly. You can also look at it from a mechanism of pay in advance. Right now, we charge a dollar to every customer for billing. Well, if you didn't have to bill them every month, you could save the customer a little money. If you bill them once a year, you wouldn't have to charge them much for a dollar every month. There's $12 a year you've got to pay someone to lick a stamp and put an envelope in the mail. So, there's lots of ways to fix these problems, but when you have no enforcement, no requirement to force people to pay their bills, we are going to experience problems similar to these. Are there solutions that'll fix them?
But those were factors that you knew existed when you got the contract.
Well, I...
You knew, you know, Red River knew that we did not have an enforcement component.
No, not from the beginning, we did not, Commissioner, that's false. Not from the beginning of the first negotiation contract.
You know, the statute itself is pretty self-explanatory.
Well, I'm just telling you, when our first contract was, it was that we were to bill every customer in the county and the county was to pay us for every customer we billed. And so, what I'm saying is, now we've evolved from that process and that's why there was a change in the contract and there was an amendment to that because of that very thing, Commissioner. And I think any garbage hauler in the state of Texas that services customers in the county experiences problems similar to these. And that's why it's taken such a long time for counties to implement processes like these, because the state law and the legislature is behind the curve still to this day to solve some of these problems. There's a lot of work that needs to be done to legislature where other counties in Texas can do what Cameron County did. There's a lot of work to be done. We were active this year in the lobby, just trying to do some things like that that would better the service we could provide to the county, and there's more work to be done. It's just the fact of laws and state laws.
Well, there's no enforcement component that we can utilize.
That, Commissioner, I completely agree, and that's why, you know, we're going to work steadfast to see if we can do some things to change that, because if there's no enforcement, that means this governing body of Cameron County has no ability to force people to use the service and to pay for it. So, you guys are going to have to then get a new budget item and create a staff to do illegal dumping, do lots of other things, because this system has worked. It's done a lot of good things and cleaned it up, but it's a learning curve, like we said before, it's a trailblazer, it's something new and different. It's going to have to go through modifications to make it better for the customer.
There's number six under issues and solutions, customer credits will be issued on an individual basis. Is that referring to customer credits when trash isn't picked up for several weeks or what is this?
And that's what we've experienced here recently. We visited with Jim today and we talked about that, so we're going to sit there and go through our records and look at that and then work with the customers to make sure they're made whole for what services they didn't receive. And I promise you, we have a list of those. So, we will work steadfast at rectifying that and making those citizens whole for the sum of things that we just failed to accomplish. And a lot of the solutions, we talk about brush collection, I think, you know, I think we've met with a few of you guys individually, Judge, I think we met with you the other day, and we talked about something else in a letter that we provided to you. I don't know if this is the correct forum to discuss that, but we definitely want the court to understand for the record that we would like the court to consider modifications, possibly to the method.
Yeah, this is, I would much rather we discuss this in an open forum versus individual members of the court, so, yeah.
That's fine, that's why we want to have a hand up.
You got it.
Judge and Commissioners, if this is any discussion on any kind of contract changes, the agenda items does not reflect that and we won't really be able to discuss that. We'd have to come back.
What we're good at is that workshop, I mean...
I'm going to do that.
I think that would be really, really helpful, that way we can meet...
This letter was included as backup material in our agenda, so we've all seen the letter and already read it.
Just seen it, that's much.
No.
Well, that's actually...
Well, I think what he can do is, he can pretty much verbalize what's on here, "We're not going to make a decision regarding the contract," he's just going to give us some of his thoughts.
Yeah, just, Judge, just...
We can do that, yeah.
And we're upfront and honest, you know, we're going to be upfront and honest with this court, I think we have from the beginning inception of what we're doing, but I think we are now at a point where we look at where we started and where we are today and where we want to be, just say in a few years. You know, if we were the third contractor that was servicing this contract, we wouldn't be experiencing any of these problems, but we are the first contractor and the method in which brush was chosen and negotiated was a monthly pickup, okay? And that's fine, but I think there's lots of things that we face in the rule setting and a number one thing, Judge, and we've talked about this, and I think everybody understands it, is customer identification. It's very, very challenging in the rule setting when lots of people don't have addresses, where you've got a post office box for billing and the service address is different than this. It's just challenging, it really is, because when a garbage, when a container for garbage is at the street, it's just common sense for the driver to pick it up. But when you've got a different driver coming through on a different route and that possibly a different week of the month for brush and you can't identify the pile next to a container or we have the deal of vacant lots across the street in the right-of-ways, or we have a dumpster from a competing company, it's a challenge, it is. And I think John Sarah has worked really, really well with us in the past, and I, one thing with the court, we would sure like to know if we could get more of his services, because I think we get partial, partial of his time now, but when we do have the ability to work with John, he is a big part of the success, or maybe not just an individual, but some enforcement mechanism, some liaison between us and the county. And we definitely need that, because enforcement is going to be the success of this program. And one thing about enforcement, Judge and Commissioners, is, you know, we, there's a 5% administration fee paid to the county to administer our contract. That amounts to over probably $12,000 a month, which we pay Cameron County to operate, and we just want to see, and I think one thing that Commissioner Garza, we had spoke about the other day, when there comes to a point where there's some material that cannot be verified, it's unidentified, no telling whose it is, I would, I don't know if you guys would tend to agree, but I think $12,000 a month is more than you would pay any one person to manage or administer our contract. I think there's some additional monies where the county could help pay us or someone to pick up unverified piles of contaminated waste, brush, anything. I mean, there's money there, $12,000 a month, I mean, if you paid one person to administer contract $12,000 a month, that's pretty good money. But that's the amount of money we're talking about, so what we're asking the court is to consider, there's some money there that can be used for a legal dumping collection or to go pick up piles that the county nor the contractor can identify as a valid waste product to be collected. So, it's just something to consider, there's money there, I don't know that it's all used, but Judge, we're just asking for consideration on that, because there's a lot of things that we just can't control, that county can't control, because enforcement is where it is today.
You know, I don't know how that originated, where it's going, how it's going, because that was before my time, so, I mean, I don't, you know, we could always do that in the renegotiations or if we go out for bid again, we can factor that in at some point, but I don't know what that $144,000 a year is used for.
And we don't either, Judge, and that's why we're asking, because I think...
Well, I mean, it really, it really shouldn't matter to you what we use it for, that was the contract that was signed that you guys agreed to, that was a 5% fee that y'all agreed to do and that was part of the deal, you know, I mean, I could, you know...
Judge, it does matter, because...
Pardon me?
It does matter, because we want to make sure that the money that the resident pays is administered and that we have some support and some enforcement, and that's what that money's to pay for.
I don't know, initially, the money was earmarked for a director and a person to help him manage an office. When the billing all got changed and everything else, that's when the duties were changed in that particular office and we were told it was no longer needed. My suggestion, and it was just like thinking out loud when we had the meeting the other day, I says, "You know, if we took $11,000 a month and just use that so that when you have problems with trash, somewhere Idna or I or John have problems or you get calls, I mean, we would have the ability to say, 'You know what, you know, I'm tired of seeing this road with all this that no one claims, send out a truck and charge us by the load to get rid of it, dispose of it.'" But utilizing the money that is collected for trash collection for trash collection, not to subsidize anything else.
Javier, is that $144,000 part of your general fund or is that going into Road and Bridge?
Actually, I don't know that exists. Prior to, I guess, a settlement that was agreed to some months back, we hadn't even seen it, so those funds were not funded, and I don't know if we can say...
But when the, I guess, but that was a, but that was a general fund, I guess, issue, if I had to guess, right? I mean, I think, I think...
But this should be a separate fund.
Okay.
Am I understanding correctly, we're saying that we will utilize that money so that if we get a complaint, someone goes and picks up the trash or whatever?
No, I don't, I don't, I think, I think what Commissioner Gatzza said was that would be a good way to utilize the money, I don't think we've decided what we're going to do it with.
That's not what we're utilizing it.
No, I know that, but...
It's just going into the general fund.
Well, I'm going to play the devil's advocate in that situation, then I'm going to be getting calls from people that are saying, "Well, I'm paying for my service, how come you wanted to pick up so-and-so's trash?"
Right.
Or brush.
Well, the problem comes in where when someone calls about brush that hasn't been picked up, first, we have to ask them, "Are you a customer of Red River? If you are, then why didn't Red River pick it up?"
Right.
"Too big, whatever, couldn't identify, it was on the neighbor's vacant lot," something like this. If they're not a customer of Red River, the brush still belongs to them, I mean, they cut it off of their tree, it still belongs to them no matter where they put it, and they're responsible, the way we're operating now, for paying for having their brush removed or burning it.
Well, I know that there's, there's a lot of things that can be improved as far as Red River goes, but in going to Arroyo City, and Jack is sitting right over there and he can tell you...
Oh, he's making the notes, he's loading for bear.
Going along, he's taking notes, going along towards Arroyo City, there's this enormous piles of brush on the state highway, and I started getting calls from people in Arroyo City saying, "Does TechStot have a contract with a county to pick up trash?"
And I think, I think what we're talking about is, well, we're talking about that, we have...
On the state highway.
What they is, and I would take care of it, some of the trash that's there, out there, it won't be there. With that trash, people that live across the street are triggers and stuff, and they just take it over across the road and don't get on the state property. I mean, that's clear, it's going to be a tough, it's going to be a tough challenge to make, and they can call it, and that's what's going to be happening. I know what that, that, that people are crashing on the highway and they don't...
Well, but see, people are calling me and saying, "How come Red River hasn't picked it up?" And I'll say, "Well, you know, we..."
It's on the state railway.
It's on the state highway and somebody's doing things illegally.
People are putting in, it's, well, there's a couple things.
Number one, most people are only there on weekends.
Okay.
They're not there at weekends, they're there on weekends, they're up the yard and all the trash, uh, security, and so they're not seeing anybody, so what they're doing is they're delivering, and that's, that's what's in, and finally, we're in. And I know it's hard to catch people at, I was perking them, they were saying, "I didn't know about the town, I didn't see it," but on the top floor of this lease, I had, I saw a guy down there, he was...
Dumping.
Well, I thought it was a property or something, I thought, yeah, I thought it was a city, uh, in high fashion, but, but we'd go back to Arroyo City.
That's, that's how it's happening.
Right there, illegal, there's a problem up there.
Jack, and that's a valid point that you say, because that's one thing that we also would like, is if the county had some sort of authority to issue citations for stuff like that.
Well, the thing is that those, that those same people that you say are doing that, when the service was implemented to begin with, they said, "Well, we don't want the service because we're there just on weekends."
Well, they didn't do it, they didn't do it that often.
So, see, there's a lot of problems, a lot of differences.
There is, there is an enforcement component when there's a health and safety issue associated with it, and we always try to address it through that manner.
And there's an identification problem. You have to identify...
We do, we do have enforcement, we can enforce, I was asking Commissioner Gatzza, what happened to the litter abatement officers that we hired some years back? I mean, they were under a constable, you know, and they were out, you know, going through trash... trash and I think we funded, whatever happened to those positions?
They're under the sheriff's department. And it's, in brush, you can't identify who that came from.
Yeah, but let me, but let me-
But it's garbage and trash where they can go through it and find someone's telephone bill or something like that, then they can identify it and they can find them.
Well, let me finish my thought. Are they still doing that?
Yes.
Well, we've called them sometimes and they do. I don't know, I don't know if they're being proactive, but, but I-
I mean, are they still actively looking and investigating illegal dump sites and doing all that?
Yes, yes, they are. And illegal dumping, at least from the areas that I'm familiar with, have gone down tremendously since, obviously, since we've instituted the Red River program collecting. Because now people are doing it themselves instead of leaving it in the backyard and hauling it off at midnight and dumping it in front of somebody else's house there.
Sure, and something else, Judge, I think that we would be more than willing to do is we would be more than willing to help the county identify those illegal dump sites. When our drivers are out there every day of every week in every one in this county and we would be more than willing to help-
I think you need to be doing that then too as well.
We will, we will definitely. What we could do is we could get a, we could do something and dispatch in, but who would we notify? That's what we need to know. Who do we need to talk to? Who do we need to?
Pete, isn't John Sarah still working on that?
Well, I mean, I mean, is that a 25% job, a 50% job, 100%? I mean, is he dedicated to what we do 100% of the time?
I think if you call him, he should be returning your phone calls.
I'll tell you what, when I call him, he certainly answers. And he'll even go out to the site.
Well, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for some direction, who we talk to and that's all we need. And now we've heard it and that's what we'll do. And we'll be more than willing to help on illegal dump sites.
Getting back to John's comment about when it's brush you can't identify or you might not be able to find some identification as to who did it, most of the time, and I find this in my precinct, that if there's, if there's brush piled up, if there's, did you have something to say?
No, but I, I know how you identify some of that stuff.
Exactly. You, there are other people will add, if they see some brush piled up, they'll end up, they'll add other junk besides brush to that pile.
Mattresses and tires and-
And it contaminates it because the only thing we can pick up is clean.
And it becomes contaminated.
It's contaminated, we can't pick it up.
And they can't pick it up.
And that's, that's a common problem.
Another problem.
But I'm saying that's how law enforcement or whomever, because I know that Constable Diaz did that for me.
Well, and then we have those customers that are afraid to put their brush out because they say, if I put it out, the neighbors all come and they dump everything in front of us. It's a continual battle.
Well, I think we would all agree that brush collection needs to be considered and look at it again. Let's cover workshop and let's talk about it. Because I think we have some valid ideas, some valid, valid ideas I think will increase the efficiency of it.
We have, we have, I know of a couple lots in Cameron County that has no trees on them, yet they've always got brush in front of their lot and they've got a house on it. But some of these folks actually are yard men and they bring the brush from wherever they work and put it in front of their house so it gets picked up and they don't have to pay to haul it off or at least they don't, you know, dump it illegally.
Yeah, but all sorts of things go on. But, but the mentality that I read in a letter to the editor the other day in regards to that was, the gentleman was a yard man and he's doing Red River a favor by bringing all the brush that he picks up everywhere else to one central location so you can pick it up at that central vacant lot.
If they picked it up from Red River customers.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's like-
The other, the other thing is, and I-
It's unbelievable.
I hope my husband doesn't mind using this example. Because on Russell Lane, five neighbors decided that they would help Red River and so they put their piles together. And to them, it made sense and, I mean, my husband thought of it. He said, why have them stop in five different places? Let's just find a central location. He took it upon himself and he, he felt he was helping Red River and I, I mean, I told him I was gonna report him and I, I called. But I mean, that driver would be confused about, about, I mean, they wouldn't pick it up most likely because it's one pile.
Obviously, he didn't know about the five cubic yard rule.
Well, he said he knew how big a Volkswagen was and so it was five Volkswagens put together. They're stopping that practice.
Commissioners, that's why, that's why it's really important to just please consider some of the options. I think we can talk about them if you guys would like. And really, they just, you know, and we, I think we used the wrong probably choice of words in this letter when we used the word eliminate. We should have used the word modify.
Why don't you go to the, explain your GPS solution, RouteWare and all that? What is that?
It's quite an investment that, uh, quite an investment that, I think, Jennifer Bruce has purchased and they're in private discussion, and this particular software, RouteWare, it will integrate with our billing software. And the benefit and joy of that is our trucks, we're going to have onboard users that are on board trucks. And the beauty of that is, these, our customers will now be identified by a GEO code. So GIS, it just, it basically puts a lad in, launches it on the customer's destination. That will be matched up with an account number along with whatever type of address we've got on file. And when that truck drives up to the account, the onboard computer is going to tell our driver, is this customer current, late? It's gonna give him a magnitude of ideas and in this truck, he's gonna have a pounder. And this truck is gonna be green and red. So if the customer is current and to pick up, it's a green button. A rail uplink through GPS goes right back to our system, it's a pickup. If they're, they're not, it's a red button. And so what it's gonna do is it's gonna separate the paying customers from the non-paying customers. Because we pick up for what we pay for. The only enforcement we have is if they don't pay, we can't pick up. So that's right now the only way we have to do it. And what it's going to do, in a sense, is it's gonna be an onboard computer, GPS satellite uplink, and basically the softwares are just gonna talk to each other. The billing's gonna talk to the truck and vice versa. And when we get to an account where we have extra brush or we have extra whatever, he can actually put in the message in the onboard computer and send that back to our customer service and it'll, it'll basically keep a log of all that information.
Now, if they don't, if they don't have a physical address though, this won't work. Am I correct?
Yes, it will.
It'll still work.
It will create a GEO code, a lad in, launch to-
Oh, it'll correct and create one.
On their particular house. And what we've also done, we've worked with the GIS department, we're gonna match the 911 address. We're gonna try and integrate all this information together. The 911 addresses, the GEO codes that we set when we eventually initial, start this process. And in El Paso County, the company that's doing the rule collection there is using this exact system due to the problems that you experience in rural garbage collection. A company called TDS in Austin, Texas uses this, one of the largest independents in Texas, they use it, they do a lot of rural collection. And just to, just to kind of also let the court know, this is an investment that Red River's gonna make of 100, over $100,000 to implement this system. But it's going to mitigate some of our problems. It's going to put, the proof for the pudding is, it's going to basically get rid of the use for your paper mats. It'll be, it'll be electronic and it'll be easier to upkeep when we, especially the point where we have a house on a road that's not marked, the driver can actually go on the onboard computer and set a waypoint and set up that account.
What is your, just out of curiosity, what is your total outstanding, uncollected, billed but uncollected?
The total amount, Judge, I don't know what we'd kind of get with the accounting people, but I think the bad debt percentage is probably in the 30% when you bill, probably in the 30%. You know, in rural collection, that's just, that's pretty industry standard. You're gonna, and at that point in time, so now we're at the process where we can identify those people. So now we're not, we're not adding that added expense of having to pick them up not knowing they're not paying. Now we're getting a better feel for who's paying, who's not paying. And that also sparks more phone calls. I mean, when, when, that's just the nature of the beast. And I think we've talked about, I think, some other ideas and some solutions to fix those problems. But billing is, is an issue. Identifying customers is an issue. And if we could kind of intermingle some of those things through a workshop and discussion, I think there's things that can take this program to the next level. Because I think we're at a, we're at a situation where it's time to look at ways of doing things better. And we just, we just hope the court would, would, would give us the ability to do that and work together and make it better. That's all we're asking for.
You know, I will tell you that I, since all this media attention has occurred with this, I have had a number of folks that have stopped me and told me that they have excellent service from your company and they haven't ever been missed. I can tell you, I utilized your service in two years now or going on two years. I think I've been skipped once, which is fairly insignificant, you know? I've never used your brush because I didn't want to pile something out and I was afraid everybody else would come and pile their stuff there. But there, there has been a number of folks that have expressed, you know, thanks to the county, I know in visiting with you, I think the number mentioned was 68,000 cubic tons.
68,000 tons.
Of solid waste has been picked up in the last two years, which would be now scattered throughout Cameron County everywhere, you know, which is pretty significant.
County is much, much cleaner.
Yeah. So there's, there's been some headway made, we just need to fine tune some of the-
Commissioner, I really appreciate hearing that because there's a lot of negative things that, that get put upon us, but I think there's a lot of positive things. And there's a lot of people that work with the Red River, Red River family that would really appreciate hearing that comment and making it a public record. Because we get so many times, so many things that are so negative, but there are so many positives and we, we have a great staff of folks, manage locally, everyone's locally, they all live here in this community and they're doing what they can each and every day to please these customers and take care of business. And we really appreciate you saying that, Bill.
Mr. Cooper, I'd like to add that. From the time that I took office to probably the last two months, I had very few calls from my area. And the calls that have come through, I think, have been based on the fact that we've had a lot of rain, we've had a lot of cutting of trees, you know, greenery. And the problem has been also that they go and they place it in empty lots, you know, and then everybody else decides they're gonna go and dump their own in there because you can't identify it. You have mattresses, you have just any number of things that are dumped in there and I can see why you wouldn't be able to pick them up. But like I said, I cannot say that I've had an enormous amount of calls. And like I said, I usually call John and John goes out and he'll contact you all. I think I've maybe called you all maybe once or twice. And people are satisfied with it, up to now.
Sure, I appreciate that, Commissioner. We hope we can make it bigger and better for sure. We're just, we're doing what we can. I think we're gonna make some investments that some people might not make, but I, I think it could definitely help. That really kind of wraps it up. Other than, you know, going into some details, Commissioners, in regards to some of the options that we've kind of put in front of you guys, you know, I think you'll, you'll look at brush where you can make it a, you could, you could still have it, have it as a required service, but do it as an on-call situation where the customer calls in and requests the service. You know, and I think when you get to that point, I think there's a chance that you can get a better handle on the scheduling. Because when you drive every county road, you're just driving every county road because you're looking for a pile to pick up. But if you had a better idea of where the piles were, the schedule would be much easier to keep up with, other than driving, like I think Pete, you guys told us there's over 800 county, there's over 800 miles in the county. So what we're doing is basically our trucks are driving over 800 miles looking for a pile of brush. And if it was just dispatched or it was handled differently, I think it'd be a little bit better. I think we talked about do as you pay as you throw. I think that's pretty big in some communities where the people who don't use it don't pay it, but the people who use it pay for it. I think it makes sense. Pay as you throw, it works in lots of communities. Like lots, some people only use the trash can. Some people will, like you said, Commissioner, you're never gonna, you've never used the brush. So you're paying for a service you don't, don't ever use. There's probably a lot of customers in Cameron County that don't use brush collection. There could be a possibly a, a reduction in cost to them and an added benefit to people who are willing to pay for that extra service. There's also a way you could probably implement a countywide cleanup at a larger frequency per year, maybe four times a year, to help pick up the bulkies and some of those other items. And I think you could also, I think we also spoke with Commissioners Garza's office and we talked about possibly issuing a, a additional cart, which would be a green cart, which would signify, you know, bagged grass or leaves in the cart. And if it was an uncontained loose brush pile, it would be a call-in and it'd be a pay as you throw. But I think those are just some options to consider. We've done work in numerous different states. We work in Guam, we've worked in Florida, we've worked in Kentucky, we've worked all across the country. There are ways to make things more efficient and we just ask for your consideration in doing that. And hopefully a workshop would give us a better opportunity to kind of do some more homework and present you guys with some more theory in why we think it could be better. And it will also at that point in time be able to kind of give you an idea of what the, what the, the offset in cost could be as well. That's probably about all I had. I, I hope we've addressed most of the, you know, the kind of the issues that each of you guys have experienced over the past, you know, 60 days. We're working really, really hard to correct those and it's an ongoing process. And we appreciate the time you guys have taken to listen to us.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge Red River's report?
So, second.
By Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? Jack, if you can, keep it to about three to five minutes.
First question I have to ask, and I'll have to ask, so I don't remember.
Jack, if you can, just overhear the microphone so we can go on the record.
Yeah. First question I'd like to ask a representative, and I apologize for not hearing his name.
David.
David. Do y'all have any contracts, are y'all doing any service anywhere that is not going through some kind of a governmental entity?
Governmental entity?
Yeah. In other words, are, do you have someplace in the country like Waste Management, they're just going out and they're picking up trash? They're, they're not dealing with, with a county or city or whatever?
I would consider that, Jack, to be what you call it, a subscription service in a rural setting. Commercial and industrial work will all be subscription. Where you basically go out and have your delivery in your customer. Yes, we do have commercial, industrial work at numerous places. We service a lot of roll-off work here, we also do a lot of product, but we look at residential-
No, no, well-
That is something that is different. It's different. You look at some states that have different laws where they have-
Well, you're, you're aborting my question. My question's real simple. Do, do you do, do you pick up trash anywhere that residential trash, anywhere that you're just not going out and doing it through some governmental entity?
We do have any subscription contracts for residential waste collection.
Okay. All right. I think I understood that. I think the answer was no to my question. I know Commissioner Garza's getting tired of hearing about perception, but I'm gonna talk about that some, but I want to wait until the judge gets back because I need him to hear this part of it.
Uh, what?
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear you, Jack.
Oh, I, I said, I know you're getting tired of hearing about perception, but I'm gonna talk about that some, but I want to wait until the judge gets back because I want him to hear this-
No, I don't get tired of hearing about perception.
I brought it up. Basically, Red River Services got this contract because they're gonna pick up brush. That seems to be where our biggest problem is.
All parties submitted a bid on the brush?
Okay, all right, okay. But here's my, here's, here's my big problem, or one of my problems. You just told me that you don't have any residential pickup anywhere that's not done without, through some kind of governmental agency. And you're down here asking us to tell you how, you're down here asking us to tell you how to do your job. My whole deal in this last two years, I thought we were hiring somebody that, that knew what they were doing. It's seemed pretty obvious that this is not the case.
You made a hard decision, hard service, that's what you're doing.
Judge, one of the things that I didn't want you to miss and I was, we're going to talk about perception and you weren't here on the start of this thing a couple of years ago. And part of our problems started two years ago. They formed a board, pointed people to it, that had the appearance, the perception, if you will, of a bias, a conflict of interest. One of the guys, as I remembered, I don't have my notes, I've got about two years-